Let's see, reconvening from our closed session, I have the following disclosure. By a 4 to 0 vote with Councilmember Suen absent, the City Council authorized and directed the City Attorney's Office to defend the cases of Hansra versus the City of Elk Grove Police Department as identified by the case number on the City Council meeting agenda. Now we will go ahead and adjourn our special meeting at 6:03 PM. And at this time, I would like to call to order the Elk Grove City Council Regular Meeting and the Elk Grove Finance Authority Regular Meeting concurrent agendas Wednesday, September the 24th, 2025. The time is 6:03 PM. Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council is recorded with closed captioning. The recording will be cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. The recording will also be video streamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Tonight's meeting replays will be on Friday, September 26th at 1:00 PM and Monday, September 29th, also at 1:00 PM on Metro Channel 14. Once posted, the recordings of this and previous meetings can be viewed on demand at the www.elkgrove.gov or youtube.com/metrocable14. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. The Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular noticed agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than three minutes. If you wish to address the Council during the meeting, please complete a blue speaker card, which can be found at the back of the chamber, and provide it to Assistant City Clerk Brenda Hager prior to consideration of the agenda item. With that, Mayor, I will be moving into our roll call. And for the roll call, I will start with Councilmember Spees.
Present.
Councilmember Brewer?
Present.
I will note that Councilmember Suen is absent, Vice Mayor Robles?
Present.
And Mayor Singh Allen?
Here.
All right. Next up is our land acknowledgement. Assisting will be our Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We honor, respect, and acknowledge Elk Grove's first inhabitants, the Plain Meawocks, who lived and sovereign caretakers of this land and these waterways since time immemorial. We commemorate and advocate for the descendants, the Wilton Rancheria, the only federalized-recognized tribe in Sacramento County, who have endured because of their bravery, resilience, determination, their ancestors, tribal members, and leaders.
All right. Next up is our Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to invite, let's see, Ms. Guzman, would you help lead us in the pledge this evening? Thank you.
The pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic to which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, please join us for a brief moment of silence. Next item is the approval of the agenda.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to propose that we move Item 10 immediately following the consent items.
All right. We have a motion with that change. Can I get a second?
I second it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Under Section 3, the Closed Session, there are no Closed Session items on the regular agenda, which will advance us to Section 4, our Presentations and Announcements, and that first being Item 4.1, the Asphalt Art Competition Student Recognition.
I am Ash Kumar, Senior Management Analyst in the City Manager's Office. I'm here to provide an update on our asphalt art project and to recognize the winners of our student asphalt art competition. So some project background, in August 2025, the City of Elk Grove launched an innovative pilot asphalt art project that represents a new approach to creative placemaking, which has been installed in many other locations in the country and worldwide. Located at the intersection of Franklin High Road and Hewitt Way, this initiative serves three critical purposes: enhancing traffic safety by driving driver behavior to crosswalks and bike paths; beautifying our neighborhood with vibrant art that reflects our community's character; and, most importantly, engaging our youth as active contributors to their community's development. Our partnership with Toby Johnson Middle School transformed this from a city project into a true community collaboration. Under the theme "Community Threads," we challenged students to create designs reflecting our community spirit, local landmarks, natural beauty, and positive imagery. Thanks to the dedicated leadership of Principal Jennifer Kieport and the creative expertise of art teacher Jamie Shilin, who conducted specialized workshops, we received an overwhelming response of 70 unique hand-drawn submissions. Each design was carefully evaluated by our city staff alongside Mike Mangannon from the Arts and Creative Economy Commission, using criteria focused on creativity, visual impact, thematic relevance, and safety considerations. I'll begin by showcasing the exceptional work of the top four winners, each demonstrating amazing creativity and community connection. Then I'll invite Principal Kieport to share her observations about this partnership. And after that, we'll honor each winner individually, for which I'd love to invite Mayor Singh Allen and the rest of the council to come down here. We'll have certificates and gift cards for the students. First, let's take a look at the winning designs. So winning first place, Wilson Wong of Grade Eight. We see the art, which is the art of crayons. He says this represents our community and our arts, and that the crayons are different in size, nobody is the same, but we are all equal, wanting to show the city's diversity. Again, this was first place. This is what was installed at the intersection. At second place, we have Meadow Johnson, who is again, Grade Eight, at the time of submission, who chose to draw California poppies and monarch butterflies to honor her mom, who's also here with us. So this is a great opportunity to recognize them both. Third place is Hannah Zoo, Grade Eight. She says the stars here vary in color and none are drawn exactly the same, symbolizing diversity in our community, joining hands symbolizing unity. With fourth, at fourth place, we have Ming Lee, and hers is the art representing courage in our city. And she mentions the special community attributes we have with the rivers, and also reminds us of our own bravery and uniqueness as residents in the city battling cancer and other ailments. So with that, I'd like to invite Principal Kieport to come up here and share her experience with this partnership.
Thank you, Ash, and good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Jenny Kieport. I'm the principal at Toby Johnson Middle School. First, I'd like to say congratulations to Wilson for winning the asphalt art contest. We have our gift of $100 for you here tonight, Wilson. His design brightens up our community. His inspiration was to have the diversity in the crayons represent the diversity in our school and community, and we all also hope that it increases safety around our school. I was thrilled to be part of this joint effort with Toby Johnson Middle School and the City of Elk Grove, including young people, tells them that they are seen, that they have a voice, and that their voice is heard and appreciated. I plan to take advantage of any future opportunities that involve our students and their ideas and perspectives in our community. And I must say that safety around our school is our absolute greatest concern. It feels like we hold our breaths every day with traffic safety, so anything that can be done to slow cars down is appreciated. Along these same lines, I would be remiss if I did not take this opportunity to bring attention to recent news headlines in Sacramento about the potential end to funding for public media channel licenses like the Sacramento Educational Cable Consortium, or SEC. The SEC directly funds incredible school media programs, including at Toby Johnson Middle School and Franklin High School. These programs are one more way to connect young people to their community by making them feel seen, encouraging them to use their voice, and letting them know their voice is heard, appreciated, and important. If the SEC should end all of these programs, we'll be looking for funding sources to continue school programs that give students access to information, and information is equity. Congratulations again to Wilson and all three, they're Franklin students now, but I'm going to call them Toby students because they were, recognized for their outstanding art, and thank you to the city for including us.
With that, Mayor and Councilmembers, if you'd like to come down here, one by one, we'll ask all the, we have, I think we have three participants here in the audience today, so we'll be recognizing those three, first, starting with Wilson, first place winner.
Excellent. Can we give them all a round of applause before we come down? Okay? Right down.
Congratulations.
You're a freshman right now in Franklin?
Hi, Wilson. Great work.
Hi, Jenny.
I'm here, I'm going to present this to you. And we're going to look this way.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Family members, welcome to come join.
Zero.
Do you want to come in?
You should come in.
You want to come in? Yep. Wilson, does he have the camera or somebody else?
Yes. Ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. And one, two, three. One, two, three.
Congratulations to you. Great work. That's for you.
Good job.
All right, another round. Next up, let's welcome Meadow Johnson.
He's going to be on the floor.
Can I have a picture with you?
Yep.
Come on up.
Congratulations.
Nobody's allowed to sit outside anymore.
All right, this is for you. I'll take a picture. Can we give it to Ash there? Excellent.
My name is Toby. My name is...
All right. All right, here we go. Okay, ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. One more time. One, two, three, and one, two, three.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And fourth place winner.
Oh, she is here. Wonderful.
We do have Ming here.
All right. Hey, buddy, what's your name?
I think it's a winner.
One, two, three. One, two, three. And one, two, three.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now you know what we're talking about. I'm sorry, it's hard to get a chance.
Let's give them all one more enthusiastic round of applause. Great work. So much talent in our school district, especially our young middle schoolers. Thank you for your passion. Continue that. I can still barely manage stick figures, so I'm always impressed with our student talent. All right, next up, Item 4.2, Proclamation Recognizing September 2025 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. Is Terry Defrates, Defrady, how do you?
Defratus.
Defratus. All right. And assisting will be Councilmember Brewer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Terry, thank you for being here tonight to accept the proclamation recognizing September 2025 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month, and doing this in conjunction with the Greater Sacramento Prostate Cancer Support Group and the California Prostate Cancer Coalition. We do recognize that September is annually observed as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month, and the purpose of it is to educate men about the risks and symptoms of prostate cancer and to encourage regular screenings such as prostate cancer-specific antigen PSA tests and digital rectal exams, DREs, and to provide information on treatment options and support resources for patients and their families, and to advocate for research and advancements in prostate cancer prevention and cure. Amongst there, there's four key facts I wanted to share with the audience tonight. That prostate cancer is the most common non-cancer, non-skin cancer in America for men. It is estimated that one in nine men will be diagnosed with prostate cancer in their lifetime. Early detection is crucial, as prostate cancer is highly treatable when caught in its early stages, and African-American men are at a higher risk of developing and dying from prostate cancer more than, more so than other racial groups. But as it's, what we do over the course of the month is doing activities for awareness, educational events, fundraising efforts, and support groups.
Yes.
Most importantly, to connect, empower each other, and so we can move through the process and know that we have a group, family, friends, that can help us get through this, but also fight and win.
Yes.
And so, that's why I thank you for being here. We do have a proclamation that I want to share with you. I'll share a couple of the whereas's, and then I'd like to hand the floor over to you to say any remarks that you'd like to share. And so, this proclamation of Prostate Cancer Awareness Month, where as prostate cancer is the most frequently diagnosed cancer in men and the second-leading cause of cancer deaths in men, and the American Cancer Society estimates that 29,600 men in California will be diagnosed with prostate cancer this year, and estimated that an additional 4,140 California men will die from this disease this year. And the five-year survival rate approaches 100% when prostate cancer is diagnosed and treated early. Early-stage prostate cancer usually causes no symptoms. And treatment options for prostate cancer vary depending on age, stage, and grade of cancer, as well as the effects of other existing medical conditions. And the American Cancer Society recommends that men have a conversation with their health care provider to make an informed decision about testing for prostate cancer. And whereas all men are at risk for prostate cancer, and the City of Elk Grove joins communities across the nation to increase the awareness of the importance of early detection of prostate cancer, so therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby proclaims September 25 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Elk Grove, and asks the community to increase awareness about the importance for men to make informed decisions with their health care provider about early detection and testing for prostate cancer on this day, September 24th, 2025. So yes, Terry, please take it away.
I'm sitting here terribly nervous. Thank you for having us and this proclamation. I'm a survivor of prostate cancer. I did get detected early. They removed my prostate, and it was all contained within the prostate, so I didn't have to go through treatment for that cancer. But it was very important. If you don't get your PSAs done, it can metastatize throughout the body, and then you're really in trouble. So it's very important to do that. I can't emphasize enough to get on your doctor and have him do the PSA, because some of them don't want to do it. So you need to get on there and make sure you're done.
All right. Well, thank you. And great to see that you're doing well, sir.
Thank you.
All right.
How are you, sir?
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
This is for you. It's good to meet you.
Thank you.
Ready? Ready?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Continued help.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up is our Historic Preservation Committee Annual Update.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Rachel Simi, and I will be giving the presentation today for the annual update on the Historical Preservation Committee. I want to begin by saying thank you to Kira, who is right over there, our staff member who helps us out in our meetings. She's a great resource, and we adore her so much. This is just... Okay, so, our members are Peggy Forseth Andrews, who is our chair. Unfortunately, she wasn't able to make it today. She sends her apologies. Dennis Buscher, who is also a representative from the Elk Grove Historical Society. Shvetta Dala, John Frazier, and our most recent member, Nathaniel Copas. We would also like to take this time to acknowledge Nadia Melgoza, who was our vice chair, and Brian Van Lint. They were both members. Unfortunately, they had to leave in this past year due to work commitments, but we thank them for the time they dedicated to our meetings. Currently, we meet every second Monday of the month at 6:00 PM as needed, and we are five voting members with two alternates. Our purpose is to identify, designate, protect, enhance, and perpetuate the use of historical resources. Historical resources includes things like buildings, structures, objects, sites, districts, cultural landscapes, and tribal cultural resources in the city that reflect special elements of the city's heritage and cultural diversity. This is important to maintaining Elk Grove's historical preservation. We also provide formal recommendations on alterations to historical resources to the Development Services Director, the Zoning Administrator, and the Planning Commission. And on occasion, we do also provide formal recommendation to the City Council on the designation of historical resources. In the past year, our biggest accomplishment, and probably the one we're most proud of, is creating and launching the Elk Grove Local Register of Historic Resources. This has been something that has been in the works for years, and we were finally able to bring it 54 places to you guys last year. And that list is also available for the public to look at on the Elk Grove City website, as well as information about what places, how to make sure your places meet the criteria, and what to do if you would like to get on that register. We also met again with the owners of the Old Town Pub, which is shaping up to be still in construction, but shaping up to be opening soon. And most recently, we had the annual training on the Mills Act and Tax Incentives Program. The Mills Act enables cities and counties to enter in contracts with property owners. It provides property tax reductions in exchange for ongoing preservation and rehabilitation of historic buildings, and this is the most important financial incentive for historic homes in California. In our most recent meeting, we learned that there are a lot of financial opportunities that they are creating to allow preservation of historic buildings and homes. Some of our goals for the next year include bringing some more places onto the council to add to the Elk Grove Register of Historic Resources, continue with our annual training, participating in the Old Town SPA Guidelines Update, continuing to maintain a strong relationship with the Elk Grove Historical Society and Old Town Foundation, which proved to be vital in determining what's, whether something or not is a historical part of a building. And also working on education and outreach. We discovered a lot of people didn't realize anything about the historical district SPA, kind of confused with that. So working on kind of just educating them on that, as well as the Elk Grove Register of Historic Resources, and educating them on what we do at the committee. And I want to thank you all for your time today.
All right. Well, thank you for your update, and congratulations to you and to all of our members for your service to your city. Thank you. All right. We're going to move on to our next item, which is public comment. I will go ahead and open up public comment opportunity. We have one person signed up to speak, Lynn Wheat.
So this summer, I had an opportunity to travel and actually get on a vacation. And when I go on vacation, sometimes I think about our city here, and when I see really great ideas, or I believe to be great ideas, that might benefit our community, I like to bring them back to our city. So I wanted to bring back one idea. We went to one town, and they were very proud of their town and their community, and they had a community arts banner program. And I know that we have banners throughout our city and Old Town that we put up, that the city puts up along Elk Grove Boulevard and such, and I think this might be an opportunity for us to include all of our students within our community. I just took one picture, and I took one of an elementary school child drew this, representing their community and how proud they were to live in their community. And then I recognized that we're looking at different mural plans and programs, and I, you know, I'm a little disappointed that we couldn't consider really working with our communities and using some of our local businesses here to advocate some of those. But in another town that we went to, one of the businesses had a mural on their wall, and this was a mural done by high school students in 1998. The mural's still there. So could you imagine, they go off to college, they come back, they have their families there, and here they participated in a mural, really bringing home a community spirit? A number of years ago, I saw a wall painting in one city that I really liked, that I thought would be really great here, and in particular, I brought it up a number of times, the Walmart Wall over the pedestrian overpass continues to be graffitiing, and I just don't think that that's a really good thing for our community. And I know that Walmart helps out in education. Wouldn't it be great if we could promote that and have something like this done along that wall, and even on the other side where we have graffiti, and get our students involved in that? Lastly, we do have very, very artistic students within our community, and I went down to Chalk It Up, and I was so proud to see that our Laguna Creek High School students actually went to Chalk It Up. And Chalk It Up is a Sacrament, City of Sacramento program through the arts, and they, they, let me hold this up longer, because what they do is they bring their arts community together and the local businesses promoting this, and they raise money for their arts programs, and they use local artists. They might not be big-name artists, but they're local artists, and how wonderful that would be. And just think, we could do something like this and give our students the benefit of our Measure E money and scholarships and such, instead of paying out-of-town firms. Again, when we promote local businesses, I believe you as a council ought to do that, and not do as I say but don't do as I do, which, listening to the last meeting, I really felt that happened. Thank you.
Thank you. That is our final public comment, so I will go ahead and close public comment. I will go ahead and open up public comment opportunity. We have one person signed up to speak, Lynn Wheat.
Good evening. So, this summer, I had an opportunity to travel and actually get on a vacation. And when I go on vacation, sometimes I think about our city here. And when I see really great ideas, or I believe to be great ideas, that might benefit our community, I like to bring them back to our city. So, I wanted to bring back one idea. We went to one town, and they were very proud of their town and their community, and they had a community arts banner program. And I know that we have banners throughout our city and Old Town that we put up, that the city puts up along Elk Grove Boulevard and such. And I think this might be an opportunity for us to include all of our students within our community. I just took one picture, and I took one of an elementary school child drew this, representing their community and how proud they were to live in their community. And then I recognized that we're looking at different mural plans and programs, and I, you know, I'm a little disappointed that we couldn't consider really working with our communities and using some of our local businesses here to advocate some of those. But in another town that we went to, one of the businesses had a mural on their wall. And this was a mural done by high school students in 1998. The mural's still there. So, could you imagine they go off to college, they come back, they have their families there, and here they participated in a mural, really bringing home a community spirit? A number of years ago, I saw a wall painting in one city that I really liked, that I thought would be really great here, and in particular, I brought it up a number of times. The Walmart wall over the pedestrian overpass continues to be graffitiing, and I just don't think that that's a really good thing for our community. And I know that Walmart helps out in education. Wouldn't it be great if we could promote that and have something like this done along that wall, and even on the other side where we have graffiti, and get our students involved in that? Lastly, we do have very, very artistic students within our community, and I went down to Chalk It Up, and I was so proud to see that our Laguna Creek High School students actually went to Chalk It Up. And Chalk It Up is a Sacramento, City of Sacramento program through the arts, and they, let me hold this up longer, because what they do is they bring their arts community together and the local businesses promoting this, and they raise money for their arts programs, and they use local artists. They might not be big-name artists, but they're local artists, and how wonderful that would be. And just think, we could do something like this and give our students the benefit of our Measure E money and scholarships and such, instead of paying out-of-town firms. Again, when we promote local businesses, I believe you as a council ought to do that and not do as I say but don't do as I do, which, listening to the last meeting, I really felt that happened. Thank you.
Thank you. That is our final public comment, so I will go ahead and close public comment and move on to our next item, our City Manager's Report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council, Jason Berman, City Manager. First, that time of the year, we have high school homecomings and homecoming parades. The first is going to be Elk Grove High School Homecoming Parade around the Old Town or historic district of our community this Friday, September 26. Police Department will be on hand to assist with traffic controls and detours starting around 12:45 PM. Motors can expect lane closures on Elk Grove Boulevard and Elk Grove Florin. If you want to find out more about the parade and the road closure, you can go to the city's website for the traffic advisory. City's excited to be part of Terra Madre America is making its debut this weekend at State Credit Union Convention Center in Sacramento. The Elk Grove Experience will be hosted by Explore Elk Grove and sponsored by the City of Elk Grove, featuring Elk Grove businesses. Details are available at terramadreusa.com. It's going to be an amazing event, so excited to participate in that. Mark your calendars for Wednesday, October 1st, and stop by 18 Grams anytime between 7:00 AM and 10:00 AM to enjoy a cup of coffee and conversation with officers and staff from our police department. It's an opportunity for residents to get to know the people who serve our wonderful community. City's Diversity Inclusion Commission will celebrate the LGBTQIA+ community and its culturally rich history and activism and change during Cultural Connections. Elk Grove outlou out on Monday, October 6th, at District 56, starting at 6:30 PM. Evening will include community members sharing their stories and entertaining performances showcasing the vibrancy of this important community. Everyone is welcome. And finally, to celebrate Elk Grove's 25th anniversary, Plant a Tree Day on September 28th, the city's Public Works Team will be planting 25 new trees along Elk Grove, or sorry, Laguna Creek at Lewis Stein Road. These trees will provide important shade, improve air quality, and enhance the future trail connection and pedestrian overcrossing that will be constructed at State Route 99. The project commemorates the city's 25th anniversary, aligns with the city's sustainability goals, and reinforces a commitment to growing a healthy urban forest. And that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions the council might have.
All right. Thank you for your excellent update. Any questions or comments? Yes.
I do have bits. So, Mr. Berman, we had talked earlier this week that I'd had a conversation with Ms. Wheat, and she had expressed appreciation for the, for the street cleaning, the street sweeping. And then had some, I relayed some different opportunities to have residents know what was going on with that. And so, you texted me a little bit, something. Can you give a little update on what we're doing with the street cleaning, street sweeping?
Yeah, sure. We do street sweeping once a month on all of our residential streets. There is a webpage dedicated to that, where anybody can go on and find out which day of the month your street is supposed to be swept. And we encourage people to have their cars removed from the street during that time, starting at 6:00 AM. And so, we're going to do some, some public information. We have, I think, scheduled for the next January Citywide Newsletter, we'll have an article about that, also referring people to our website where they can get that information. And we'll also do some social posts in advance of that to let people know and remind people that they need to just be careful to keep the streets clear if they want their streets clean, because our street sweepers will be out there on the designated time, and so it'll really help us keep our community clean. So, that's, we're going to do some.
Perfect. And I, the first time I had seen it, you can go and you can type in your address, and you can find out when the street sweeper is coming, and you can encourage your neighbors to get their clunkers out of the way, which they should be taking care of anyway. But I want to thank you for updating on that, and I think it's, it's one of those things that I think people, it's one of the great things, I should say, of Measure E and how we're actually making improvements in, in the neighborhoods themselves. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Spies. Any other questions or comments? Yes.
Question. Which date was the tree planting again? I totally missed that part.
Tree planting is happening on September 28th.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Brewer, anything?
I got nothing.
All right. Excellent. All right. Thank you for your report. We will move on to our next item, which is our consent calendar items. At this time, I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. I do not have anyone signed up to speak. I'll close public comment and look for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now, we're going to switch over to Item 10, and convene the City Council and Finance Authority Joint Regular Meeting. The time is 6:37 PM. Clerk?
With a visual roll call, I will note that Councilmember Suen remains absent. We have all four of our other members, and all of the council serve as members to the Finance Authority. So, as we proceed through this item, you'll kind of be wearing two hats, but doing functions as both the City Council and the Finance Authority. I did want to note that your service on the Finance Authority does not come with any additional pay or stipend, so that's a requirement that I have to make that announcement. And with that, I will turn over this item to our staff to present the item.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council Members. I'm here tonight for to present on the Laguna Ridge Revenue Bonds Series 2025. I want to introduce our finance team. We have some of them, our consultants with us. Dave Fama with Jones Hall is our bonded disclosure counsel. Jim Fabian from Fieldman Rollup and Associates, who's our municipal advisor on this, and Eric McKean from Ramirez and Company, who is our underwriter. Here's the district map. Main boundaries are Elk Grove Boulevard to the north, Bruceville Road to the left, Bilby Road to the south. This contains about 5,800 parcels and over 1,900 square acres. The district was created in 2005 and includes separate components for both infrastructure and maintenance services. Formation documents allow eligible infrastructure costs to be financed through bonds. The formation documents also stipulate that the total maximized bonding capacity for the life of this district is 225 million. To date, we have done six series of bonds and totaling approximately 191 million dollars. Remaining bond capacity after the last issuance in 2024 is just under 34 million. The proposed 2025 issuance, we have here the good faith estimates, which are provided by our underwriter, reflecting the conditions of the market as of August 26. The par amount would be a little over, almost 24 million. Cost of issuance is over a million, and 5.17% is the current interest rate. Bonds will close October 23rd. Market conditions will determine actual par amount and interest rates, and then reserve and surety combination is possible, and that will be determined closer to closing. This is the first time that the district has, we've created a credit rating, we've seeked out a credit rating from S&amp;P. We did this because the district is primarily built out, and the timing was really ideal to obtain a rating. The benefits of this are reduced interest rates, lower insurance premiums, and access to a broader market. The credit rating was delivered last week. We received notice today that we received an A-minus credit rating, which is considered This also for potential rating improvement for future bonds, now that we do have a rating. If for a future bond or refunding, we could increase that rating. Bonding size is determined according to number of units from supporting development. There are a total of 724 single-family units, which will be supporting this bond. Special tax, taxes to support debt service will come from the shown seven supporting development projects. All projects have designated developed and are supporting this bond issuance through property tax. The expenditures are authorized per the Laguna Ridge CFD 2005-1 Formation Documents, and they are allocated for public improvements, which will also include impact fee payments. And this does not affect existing homeowners. Existing homeowners in Laguna Ridge will stay where they're at. Structure. This is identical structure to the previous bond issuance, so no change in our previous series. Will not affect change or supersede any terms of the bond issuance, includes payments, reserves, requirements, and bond covenants. The special tax for these homes will be assessed on the homeowner's annual property tax bill. Per the Laguna Ridge Formation Documents, the tax will increase 2% annually. This is identical to all previous bonds issued for this tax districts. Proposed issuance is a 26-year bond corresponding with the final year of the CFD tax assessment, which is in fiscal year 2050 to 2051. Compliance. City has complied with all reporting requirements and ongoing disclosures, and will comply for this issuance as well. Staff recommends that the City Council and Elk Grove Finance Authority adopt the three following resolutions. For City Council and the Elk Grove Finance Authority to each adopt a resolution to approve the issuance and the financing agreements, and then for City Council to adopt a resolution to make any budget adjustments necessary to record the issuance of the bond and bond This concludes my presentation. Our council and staff are here if you have any questions.
All right. Thank you for your presentation. At this time, I will declare that the public hearing is now open and open up public comment opportunity. Nobody has signed up to speak on this. I will close public comment and declare that the public hearing is now closed. Any questions or comments? Otherwise, I will look for a motion one.
Move motion one.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up.
Thank you for that action as the City Council, and now you'll shift hats over to become the Finance Authority.
Excellent. So, now it's motion two as Finance Authority.
Move motion two.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And finally, motion three.
And as we bounce back to the City Council yet again. Welcome back, council.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And I will adjourn the Joint Elk Grove City Council and Elk Grove Finance Authority Regular Meeting at 6:44 PM. Now, we will go back to Item 8.1, our public hearing.
And 8.1 is a public hearing to consider resolution approving the fiscal year 2024-25 Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnerships Program Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. I am Alicia Tutt, Management Analyst in the Housing and Public Services Division. The item I have for you tonight is the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, also known as the CAPER. This annual report describes how our Community Development Block Grant and our Home Investment Partnerships Program funds were used during the 2425 program year. The report is required to be submitted by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development within 90 days of the close of the program year. The report was included as part of your packet this evening. To highlight some of the accomplishments, the city received $9,982,758 in entitlement CDBG funding and $359,306 in home funds. These federal grants supported a variety of housing and community development activities that primarily benefit low-income households. Funded programs and projects included senior meal services, landlord-tenant and fair housing counseling, case management, emergency and transitional housing, curb ramp improvements to enhance accessibility, and support of affordable housing development. As part of this citizen participation process, a public notice was published on the city's website on September 4th and in the Elk Grove Citizen on September 5th. The 15-day public comment period began on September 9th and will conclude with tonight's public hearing. The report has been available in several public locations, as well as on the city's website during this public review and comment period, and we have not received any public comments prior to tonight's meeting. Tonight, I'm asking, at the conclusion of the public hearing, for council to approve the report so that we may submit to HUD, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
All right. Thank you. At this time, I will declare the public hearing is now open and open up public comment. Nobody has signed up to speak. I'll close public comment and declare the public hearing is now closed. Any questions or comments? If not, I'll look for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Next, Item 8.2.
Item 8.2 is a public hearing to consider resolution approving a conditional use permit and major design review amendment for the Laguna Point Amendment Home Two Suites by Hilton Project.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. Joseph Dagoman, Associate Planner with the Community Development Department, Project Planner for the Home Two Suites by Hilton Project. This project consists of a conditional use permit and major design review amendment to modify the site layout for Lot Number Three within the previously approved Laguna Point Center. This would make way for the construction of a new 110-room, four-story hotel with outdoor amenities. The project shall comply with the city's climate action plan for non-residential development. The project site is located at the Laguna Point Center. It's bound by Laguna Boulevard to the north, Laguna Springs Drive to the west, West Stockton Boulevard to the south, and Highway 99 to the east. The Laguna Point Center is comprised of nine parcels totaling approximately 20 acres. Six out of the nine parcels are developed. The project site, which is outlined in yellow on your screen, is approximately 2.7 acres. So, the full project history on this is in your staff report. I won't go through the entire project history, but just a couple highlights. So, the Laguna Point Project was initially approved by the City Council back in 2005. The subject property was approved for a three-story, 76,000-square-foot office. There was an amendment back in 2018 that amended the site plan for the project site for a future 107-room hotel. It does require subsequent conditional use permit and design review approvals, which is what you are considering this evening. So, for the conditional use permit, the purpose of a conditional use permit is for the individual review of uses typically having unusual site development features or operating characteristics to ensure compatibility with the surrounding areas and uses. There's two findings needed to support the conditional use permit. The first one would be consistency with the general plan and provisions of the zoning code, as well as the use not being a detriment to those living and working in the area. Now, in terms of this conditional use permit, we did review the compatibility of the hotel in terms of the surrounding area. This property is surrounded by commercial and office uses. The closest residential property is over 700 feet away, so there's no sensitive receptor nearby. In consultation with our colleagues at the police department, we have added conditions to ensure safety of the hotel and its guests. So, this is the site plan before you. Access to the site will be provided through the existing drive aisles along Laguna Springs Drive and a future driveway along West Stockton Boulevard. The primary hotel entrance will be located on the western side of the building that will feature porcupine. The outdoor amenities, such as the swimming pool and patio area, will be located on the southern side of the building. The proposed landscaping will feature fruitless olive, Chinese pistachio, holly oak, Chinese elm, and sawleaf zelkovia trees. The site plan and the landscape plan have been determined to be consistent with the city's zoning and design requirements. So, this depicts the architectural elevations for the proposed Home Suites project. Building facades will be treated with a variety of materials, including stucco with irctone hues, aluminum panels, porcelain tiles, aluminum-framed windows and doors, and aluminum canopies over the exterior doors on the ground level. The selected colors and materials will match the buildings already developed within the center. The lime-green accent proposed on the main tower element represents a brand-associated color selection. The proposed elevations provide a high-quality materials, detailing, and colors which are carried to all building elevations. So, to conclude, this amendment meets the needs of a specific hotel operator. The amendment reconfigures the parking area, will increase the guest room count from 107 rooms to 110 rooms, and will provide outdoor amenities, which is the swimming pool and the outdoor patio area. As I mentioned, the site plan and the landscape plan are consistent with the zoning and design guidelines, and the architecture is compatible with the rest of the Laguna Point approval. Terms of CEQA, no further environmental reviews required pursuant to Safe CEQA Guidelines, Section 15162 and 15183. And with that, staff is recommending approval of the project, subject to the findings and conditions included in the draft resolution. This concludes my presentation. I am available to answer any questions, and the applicant is also in attendance. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for your presentation. I will declare that the public hearing is now open. Would the applicant like to speak?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Jim Gillen with Gillen Consulting here, representing the applicant, Jackson Properties and Jackson Hospitality. I don't have a presentation prepared. I don't have a presentation prepared because the staff did an excellent job of summarizing the project, but I do want to thank staff for the hard work, uh, in getting this project to you in a timely manner. It was a very smooth process, and we appreciate that. And, uh, and also wanted to share that Jackson is excited about bringing this hotel. We're working on our construction drawings now, uh, in anticipation of a, a positive result tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Thank you. I will now open up the public comment opportunity. Nobody has signed up to speak. I'll close public comment, and I will declare the public hearing is now closed. Any questions or comments? Looking to the right.
Happy to make a motion. I'll second it.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Looking forward to another hotel in Elk Grove. Much needed. Thank you. All right. Uh, item 8.3.
And item 8.3 is to conduct public hearings in consideration of resolutions adding territory to the future annexation areas for community facilities, District Number 2003-2 for Police Services and Community Facilities, District Number 2006-1, Maintenance Services and related actions, as will be detailed by staff.
Good evening again. I'm here to present, um, the modernization of future annexation areas. A little bit of background, uh, CFD 2003-2, um, which is Police Services, was established in 2003 to cover additional costs of police services due to residential development. CFD 2006-1 Maintenance Services was established in March 2006 to help offset revenue shortfall for landscape and maintenance services citywide due to new development. The current annexation process into this, see, into both these CFDs is a condition of project approval and must be completed before building. It is a mul, currently a multiple-step project where we must bring the item to council twice, um, once under the resolution of intent and following up within 30 to 60 days, um, with a public hearing. This can take months to complete this process from start to finish with all of the steps involved. We are pro, proposing to modernize, modernize the CFD process. To do this, we would be def, defining annexation areas. By defining future annexation areas, it allows the parcels to be annexed in through what is called unanimous approval. Unanimous approval consists of a ballot and waives a public hearing. Streamlining the annexation process for this CFDs avoids additional steps of bringing the item to council twice, avoids the million of ballots, and reduces timeline for annexation process for these CFDs. The, uh, def, the defin, defining of an annexation area is not creating a new annexation area. It is only modernizing the current process we have. For CFD 2003-2 Police Services, this is the map, the highlighted hatched area would be the proposed new annexation area. It's basically the current Cindy bout, city boundaries, which excludes the original formation, um, parcels from 2003, and it also, um, excludes the CFD 2003-1, which is the pu, Police Service Districts that serves the Poppy Ridge area. The future area, annexation area does not change the previous 77 annexations that have been com, uh, been completed to date. For CFD 2006-1 Maintenance Services, similar, the proposed, um, annexation area is the city boundaries. Um, it excludes the original, uh, 2006 formation and also Laguna Ridge, which has their own Maintenance Service District. This will also not change the previous 103 annexations that have been completed to date. In conclusion, staff recommends that the city council conduct public hearings for both, um, CF, uh, future annexation areas, um, for CFD 2003-2 and 2006-1, and adopt, um, a series of, uh, resolutions, adding that future tar, uh, future area, um, to these facilities, and also adopting, uh, the following ordinances. Somebody has, that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions?
All right. Thank you. At this time, I will declare that the public hearing is now open and open up public comment. We have one speaker signed up, Lynn Wheat.
So when I first learned about these Melrose and how the annexations into the Melrose and CFDs occur, I had some concerns, and I brought it up to many previous city councils, explaining that as we annex in, it's kind of this Ponzi scheme, and eventually we'll quit developing, and then what happens when some of these bonds have no ending dates? And you can, any council, you, future councils, can go ahead and increase them, and that the home buyer isn't really aware of how they work. I had one council member tell me, "Well, it's in the documents they sign when they purchase their house." Well, as an excited new home buyer, those packets are about this thick, so I'm not sure how well they do getting through all of that to have some understanding. So I've complained about it, and as one previous council member had said, there's some of us that are freeloaders because we don't have these extra assessments. I'm one of those freeloaders taxpayers that have lived here for almost 40 years that have been paying assessments on my property tax. But what I want to share with you now are, there are complainers. I just bring it to you. Other complainers choose other avenues of social media to complain to, and eventually, when their taxes are so high, I imagine some might show up to meetings such as this. It has recently Laguna Ridge Direct Levees Melrose, and there, some of them aren't at 100% yet. It has recently gone up from $4,268 a year to $4,400 a year. Back in 2021, it was 3,600 or so. That is a 20% increase in only four years. At this rate, it has gone up at least 3.5% a year, if not more. Last I checked, my salary hasn't gone up 3.5% a year. In fact, it has been flat, probably, like most people in this economic environment. Proposition, Proposition 13 limits property tax increases to 2% a year. While I recognize these are direct levees that are dr, dr, different, it's worth noting. It is just me, or does anyone else think this is ridiculous? How do we bring this up with the city? Melrose is a backdoor to get around Prop 13. Very clever trick. It is getting ridiculous. Most of these new homes near the casino are selling for 8,000 to a million, which means their property tax plus Melrose are 15,000 to 20,000 a year. So in five years, that's 100,000 down the drain. That's insane. Your city council person won't care for that district. They think they can tax-fine levy their way out of anything, and so do the rest of them. One commenter, "Five kings of Elk Grove." I come and bring my complaints here because I think we need to bring our complaints directly to you and not on the media. So I probably will be the biggest complainer in trying to support some of those in our community that have no voice.
Thank you. I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing is now closed. Questions or comments? Looking to the right. Any questions or comments? Looking to the left? No? All right. Then I will entertain a motion one through four.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, item 9.1.
And item 9.1 is receive a presentation on regional homeless governance models and provide direction.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Sarah Bontrager, your Housing and Public Services Manager. Uh, tonight, I am here to, uh, cover a homeless and housing governance model that has been proposed by the county and get your feedback on that. By way of background, uh, as I think you all know, there are a lot of players in homelessness in Sacramento County. The county itself provides a lot of services, um, including behavioral health and some healthcare resources, as well as, um, shelters and supporting, um, various types of housing, permanent and transitional. Uh, local cities also play a role in that. Um, Elk Grove, uh, has many of its own homeless solutions, um, and many other cities have taken those steps as well. Um, the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency provides housing vouchers, um, and runs some of their own homeless programs. Um, and then we have the nonprofit Sacramento Steps Forward, um, which, uh, which oversees some of the regional collaboration around homelessness efforts. Um, and then, of course, there are many, many nonprofits in our community and throughout the county that provide direct services around homelessness. So it's a big problem to wrangle. There are a lot of people involved in trying to do so. That, one of the things we'll talk about tonight is how this model would change things for our continuum of care. So a little bit of background on the continuum of care, um, which is currently, uh, the lead entity for that is Sacramento Steps Forward. So the continuum of cares were created by HUD back in the mid-'90s, and really HUD wanted to centralize funding. Um, they had a lot of programs that were, um, funding different aspects of homelessness, and so they wanted to channel all of that through one, um, through one entity. So each county in the U.S. has its own continuum of care, um, that is governed by, um, there are different board structures, uh, so different communities can choose different structures, um, for who, who does the governing for this. In our community, um, there's a board of 25 to 32 folks, um, representatives of local government. Um, I myself was on the COC board for six years, and now we have, um, our analyst, Haiman Ashanafi, who's on the board. Um, the board also includes service providers, um, a lot of nonprofit agencies provide someone to the board, um, some healthcare representatives, um, business advocacy groups, um, and all COC boards per, uh, federal policy have to include one person with lived experience of homelessness. It's common for counties to be involved in the COC, and until 2011, uh, Sacramento County was the lead entity in our region's COC. The county in 2011, facing some pretty serious budget challenges, uh, transferred, um, some of the homelessness responsibilities to a newly-created nonprofit, which was Sacramento Steps Forward. Um, and they had, since then, they've served as the lead entity for the COC. Um, they award about $40 million a year in HUD funding to various projects, um, and they also get an allocation of about $15 million a year, in the most recent year, of some state funding for homeless and housing assistance and prevention. They run our local data system that, that everyone in the county uses to put, input data, um, about people experiencing homelessness, and they also conduct the point-in-time count, which will come up in 2026, and in Elk Grove will be January 27th, in case anyone, uh, is interested in volunteering with that. So Elk Grove has been a participant in the regional solutions around homelessness on the COC board and, um, working with the county and other partners. Uh, we have seen our numbers in the point-in-time count increase over time to 83 in the last point-in-time count. That is out of 6,600 in Sacramento County. So we continue to have the lowest per capita rate, um, of homelessness of the major cities in Sacramento County. Only Galt was lower, and they did not really participate in the count. So although we've, we've, our el, a lot of our folks are eligible for services through the county, um, and they have worked with us on some ideas, um, same with the COC, um, our folks sometimes get lost in the mix of 6,600 folks experiencing homelessness and a lot of demand for systems. And so as a result, we've created a lot of our own solutions. Um, we have our own full-time navigation team, two, uh, navigators, and, and our own PD homeless outreach team, two full-time officers. We created our own year-round shelter, and the next item you'll hear tonight is about, um, the permanent home for that. Uh, we have our own transitional housing resources, and we've worked really hard with our affordable housing partners to create connections that let people quickly transition to permanent housing, um, when they have income to do so. So what that's left us with, um, is we have a really nimble response time. Um, when someone calls in and says that they're homeless, our navigator can often get out there and meet with them that same day. A lot of our shelter entries are same-day shelter entries. Um, we have not, um, since shortly after the shelter opened, we have not had to turn away anyone qualified, um, from entering the shelter. And we have a lot of oversight there, right? We work really closely with our shelter team. We know who's staying at the shelter, what their situations are, and we work, um, when we can to get them transferred to affordable housing. And so as a result, we have a pretty well-managed, um, homelessness, uh, issue. It's, it's stable, and we know our folks. But regionally, uh, the homeless response system has been criticized. Certainly, if you've spent time, as you all have, out elsewhere in the region, you see a lot more examples of people experiencing homelessness. The grand jury looked into it in 2019, and then again in 2023, and found there were some deficiencies in the region's response, um, and recommended that, uh, a different organizational model, possibly a JPA, but open to other options be explored. Um, it, in 2023, the city of Sacramento and Sac County entered into a partnership agreement to work more closely on homelessness, um, and had some accountability measures on both sides. Um, and then as, um, in coordination with that, um, they had, the county and Sacramento Steps Forward hired a consultant that produced a report on governance models in 2023. Um, so a lot of this work about governance models has been underway for quite some time. Um, we did see SB 802 introduced, uh, last year, and that the goal of which was to mandate more collaboration, um, and so that, you know, caused a lot of folks to look at, you know, what, what had been done and how can we move those efforts forward. And so, um, as a result, the county in August took to their Board of Supervisors, um, a proposal to create a new entity that would cover housing and homelessness, um, called the Sacramento Homeless and Housing Board. Uh, this would be a Brown Act body, um, and would replace the existing Continuum of Care Board. It would transfer a lot of the decision-making authority to federal, on federal funds and some state funds, um, to elected officials. So the SHHB, Housing and Homelessness Board, would be a regional convenor on housing and homelessness issues. Um, the goal of it would be to increase transparency on how we're addressing homelessness and also add an element of accountability. Um, the board would establish and monitor strategic plan, action plan, looking at system-level performance targets, not individual-level performance targets, um, and set some priorities for that federal, um, and state funding. They would also have oversight of the continuum of care, um, and in some cases be able to seek new, new funding and, uh, hopefully leverage some existing funding. What we have heard, uh, from the county in, in their model is that it does not take control of funding from local jurisdictions, um, and that it would not have planning functions like, uh, taking care of zoning or housing approvals on projects. Um, it would exist to make policy recommendations, um, but the council, um, can still set its own policies on its activities and make its own choices on which projects it would fund. So this is really an early-stage proposal. There's a lot that remains to be figured out. Um, some of the concerns that staff has is, um, we're not really sure how the new board would be staffed and what the expectations would be on our own staffing, um, and, uh, financial considerations. So how is this going to be paid for? We have a new body, um, doing things. We, you know, we have many existing agencies contributing and hopefully would continue to contribute, um, in providing services, but, um, you know, there, there is more work to be done there. Um, the, the board composition is another element that still needs to be decided, and this is something that the county is looking for some feedback on, um, from the, from each of our local councils. Um, there are two options that they have laid out. Um, the first is an 11-member board, in that there would be 10 elected officials, um, two Sacramento City Council members, two county Board of Supervisors members, and then one council member from each other city, including Elk Grove, um, and including small cities like Galt and Ileton. Um, and then in the, in that 11-member board, um, 10 electeds and one person with lived experience. The other option they laid out was a 15-member board, which does have more, um, involvement from other community entities, um, like nonprofit agencies or healthcare, um, companies, um, businesses, advocates. And so that's, that's the primary difference, is that there are more voices on the 15-member board. So this is the diagram that the county has produced. It is really complicated, so I won't spend a ton of time here, but what you can see on this is that there's, um, the, uh, elected councils are choosing their own representative to serve on this Housing and Homeless Board. serve on this housing and homeless board, and that that board is working with a variety of different committees that are people from the community, that's the green little subcommittees there, and they're also working with the Strategic Leadership Group, which is a lot of the managers from the different jurisdictions, as well as from SHRA, as the Housing Authority, and from Sacramento Steps Forward. And so ideally, there's a lot of information still flowing from different sources in this model to ensure that there are community voices still in this process, even if the decision-making is made more by elected officials. So far, the Board of Supervisors has heard the proposal. They have, they discussed the merits of both options. It sounded to me like they were a little bit more in favor of the 11-member board, but we're definitely interested in hearing feedback from all of the other jurisdictions that might be a part of this. The city of Folsom did take this to their council. Their concerns were primarily around staffing and what it would take for them. They don't have dedicated housing staff the way that some other jurisdictions do, and some concerns about just the overall effectiveness and why we need to change the model at this point. Citrus Heights, their council indicated a preference for the 15-person board, so more voices, and expressed some of the same concerns that Folsom had about staffing expectations and what would be required from each jurisdiction in this. The continuum of care board is still continuing to discuss the implications of this, which would really structurally change their board. In my discussions with them, they indicated a broader interest in collaboration, including an openness to adding some elected officials to their existing board, but they're concerned that some of the community representation would be lost in this new structure and that there would be voices that would not be represented anymore on the board. The, you see here, Rachel Cordova, Galt, and Sacramento are each expected to hear the item in October. We're not sure what Ileton will do, but may not be able to participate. So the county's request today, and we do have representatives from the county here, Siobhan Kotari and David Villanueva are here with us, I believe, is that local jurisdictions provide some comments, just feedback on the general model, feedback on if you have a preference for an 11- or 15-member board or something else entirely. And then the hope is that if there's some general support for this, that there can be revisions to the model and an MOU drafted. Of course, the devil is in the details in this. You know, any preliminary feedback tonight is not a commitment to participate in this. The MOU would be brought back in quarter one if there was desire from the city to participate. So that is my presentation. I am happy to answer any questions you all have, or I'm sure our county representatives are happy to speak with you as well.
All right, thank you. Before I go to a public comment, would anybody from the county like to add to this presentation? Are we good? Okay. All right, at this time, I will go ahead and open up a public comment opportunity. We have one speaker, Zachary Basler.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Zachary Basler. I'm a COC board member. I am co-chair for the point-in-time count, and I'm a person with lived experience. I appreciate the county's proposal that they're trying to do. My biggest concerns are that we're moving from a stakeholder and members to an all-elected officials, and we'll lose all of those voices of the people before. I do also think that the biggest hurdle that wasn't presented today is that the current COC board would have to vote on it, and as currently presented to us, we're not on board. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comment. I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity. Let's see, I'll start to the right.
Yes.
Ms. Bontrager, could I ask you to bring up the slide with the board limitations, please? So I'll just get rolling on, what's that? Yeah, the four items, I think that was not what the proposed board would do. So while you're looking that up, I think, well, I would, I'm really glad that you didn't bring up the chart first, because, and you explained it in words better, because when I saw it the first time, I thought, oh my God, government, you're killing me. But thank you for that. It makes a whole, it's not often that it makes more sense by words than by picture, but I think it made a lot more sense by words. But I would support the 11-member model more so than the 15. And I want to call out the limitations on the board, which do make me feel more comfortable about moving forward. And first, it's, you know, the not taking control of funding from local jurisdictions. Measure E was, you know, decided by the residents. That is funding that is important to us. It was important for them to tell us that homelessness was a priority, and so that, you know, taking that out of the mix is helpful. The planning functions, that's another thing that I'm really glad that's not within the scope of this proposed board. And again, the policy recommendations, you know, every city is different. It's not an excuse, it's a reality. I think that our solutions will be very different than the solutions in another agency or in another city nearby. So, you know, I think we should be judged by the outcomes, not necessarily by whether we accept a policy or not. And so, you know, I fully appreciate and support the sanctity of our decisions as it's related to homelessness in Elk Grove. So yes, I'm supportive of it in general. It's very complicated, the devil is in the details, but these limitations right here to me are, if any of that crosses over, and there's one more actually I should go back to, is I wouldn't be interested in a board that would assign, would assign residents from outside of Elk Grove into our facilities. I wouldn't be supportive of that. So you can add that to the list, right? I'm happy to be cooperative. I'm happy to share ideas. I think we're doing fairly well. I think that's because the voters have asked us to do so, and I'm not willing to push our, what I believe to be our forward progress, back. So that's where I'm with it. Thank you. Great presentation. Do appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Brewer?
So thank you, Ms. Bontrager, for the presentation and for walking us through the But looking at the actual composition of what the new entity would look like, you have state funds through the Homeless Housing Assistance and Prevention Program. Will that funding still go to the county and the new entity itself? Or, and I know we talk about Measure E, but will there be a fiscal buy-in that each city would have to pay into to be a part of this new entity? Because I know in the past, there have been past bodies that have been done in a joint powers agreement type of deal, and different cities, based on their different fiscal situations, are unable to pay their share. And as a result of it, the JPA would dissolve. Has there been any discussion on what the fiscal dynamics would look like, especially in terms of staffing and all that stuff? More importantly, each local jurisdiction, how much they'd have to pay in to be a part of it, if there is? And if this were to happen without any of the cities paying into it, does that affect any state or federal funding that would help fund efforts for this new entity?
So there is a lot of funding that comes from the federal government. Maybe I shouldn't say a lot. There is funding that comes from the federal government to the COC for some administrative tasks. And I believe that the HAP funding has some amount of, you know, again, not a huge amount of administrative funding that's eligible there. So this is a detail that remains to be figured out. It's definitely something that I have a lot of interest in, how we figure out how this gets funded, if it's possible to keep it funded. The way, currently, we do not pay into the COC, and we do not pay any funds into the county directly from, you know, our homelessness funds or anything. And so, you know, could there be a way that we could have this set up so that we make use of existing funding to cover the functions? Certainly, that's, you know, that would be my preference, but there are more discussions to be had on how this is staffed and what the staffing commitment would be from each of the jurisdictions. I'm well accustomed in my position to, you know, spending some of my time working on regional collaboration, and I would expect that would continue as a part of the Strategic Leadership Group. But if there was going to be, you know, a significant amount of more time, or, you know, the staff from local jurisdictions was expected to staff the SHHB, we would need to consider that and whether we could meet that with our existing staffing. And if we couldn't, you know, where would we get funding for new staffing? So those are the conversations, I think, that a lot of the jurisdictions want to have, even those that are, you know, supportive or cautiously supportive of this. We do still need to have those discussions over the next several months, and definitely before we brought forward any MOU for your consideration.
No, I appreciate that, because I know with the work that you and your team does here is special and kind of distinct from other jurisdictions. And we know, like Galt, like Ileton, for example, they have a lot of financial problems, and the county would seem like they would be the body to play a role in whatever's done there. And I just kind of think about that from a regional approach and how this would come into play, because I know part of the negotiations of putting this together, if things are not moving in a direction or a fast enough direction, then there's the shot clock of SB 802 that could potentially create some added expediency, and then we'd have to rush to try and put something together, and that makes things a little bit more complicated. And so that's the reason why I asked that question, because federal dollars may or may not be available. If we do get federal dollars coming into the state, there may be some conditions, and it's just, these are all the different moving parts that I'm thinking about as we move about the process, because we, I mean, as a county, we're trying to do the right thing. We're trying to put things together, and we've been doing a pretty good job about doing that. It's just how things would look if certain riders would be placed on accepting federal funding going forward.
Yeah, that's definitely something we can consider as we work through the details of what this would look like.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Bontrager, I just want to say thank you for presenting this. I know that this is not an easy task, and I want to say thank you for, I forgot the last name, I think Zachary. Thank you for speaking as well. I know that the more members that there are on the board, it's more voices, but I also think that it's super important that we have folks from the community, 10 elected officials, that's 10 different people who think they have the right answer for the solution, right? And if somebody had the right answer for the solution, we would have already solved homelessness. It's a complex, hard, so many things that come at it. It's going to be an interesting task moving forward, especially when you're trying to bring in MOU and kind of explaining it. So just want to say thank you for going through it with us and letting us know the limitations. Looking forward for further discussion on this.
All right, thank you. Excellent presentation. I think this is a really positive step in the right direction. We're definitely moving in the right direction. I think SB 802 is the wrong approach, quite honestly, and that's why we were opposed initially, and then we went neutral. So I definitely want that on the record. SB 802 ultimately is not something that we want. This approach, whether it's an 11-member board or a 15-member board, I personally prefer the 11-member board, because through comment period and so on and so forth, every other voice has an opportunity to be a part of the process. They're not excluded. So I think capturing the nonprofits, the healthcare, the business advocates, there's an opportunity within an 11-member board. I just think the bigger the board, it just becomes a little bit more challenging to manage. That's not to say it's unworkable. So I'm still a little Switzerland somewhat, but still leaning more towards 11-member board. But, you know, one of the key components is keeping our local funding local. Our taxpayers through Measure E, as Councilmember Spies mentioned, they are paying for it, and therefore, we want to keep those dollars here in Elk Grove for Elk Grove. And that's why initially, in the original language prior to amendment, SB 802 was flawed severely. You know, our residents, that is our money, and we are already earmarking that to address homelessness, and we are doing a really good job. And so every city will have their own way of moving forward with a solution. It's not a cookie cutter solution, one size fits all. We want to be flexible in addressing the needs of our community. What Citrus Heights may want to do is relative to Citrus Heights and Folsom, but we are responsible for our residents, and I appreciate that there, we do need to do something. The grand jury was very loud and clear that the current system is broken and it is not working. But this flexibility allows that coordination and collaboration to take place without really some of the worst parts of SB 802 coming to realization. This is still about local control. Let's, I like to see this moving forward. I look forward to seeing the MOU. We are here as resources to the county as we move down this journey, but I definitely believe very strongly that this is a significant step in the right direction. So thank you to everybody that's been a part of the process, and I will do a special shout out to my counterpart in the city of Sacramento, Mayor Kevin McCarty, for addressing things in his own unique way, because we all have unique solutions, with his, one of the many proposals, but the tiny homes. Very controversial, but, you know, people are going to be upset at anything. So I think that allowing the flexibility, as we look down, of having a permanent homeless shelter, every city's going to be different. So we want to be flexible and fluid, but at the same time, collaborate and share resources so that we don't rest on our laurels, we continuously improve as we address a very significant crisis in the entire state. It's not just exclusive to here. So thank you, looking forward to seeing more. All right. With that, welcome back, Ms. Bontrager, for item 9.2.
Thank you. All right. So here I am again, and I have a presentation this time on our permanent shelter outreach efforts and going into phase two of that. So I'll share a little bit about what happened with phase one. So as you all remember, we have a lease on our current shelter site with the Calvary Christian Center. That runs through September of 2028. So we began our planning for the permanent home for the shelter in July, working with NJA, and NJA is here tonight, and they have some great information on what the shelter could look like, the culmination of the conceptual planning. And then we'll be moving into phase two. So let's see, why is it, oh, because I gotta get it, there we go. Okay. So just a little bit of background, we ran a series of three public meeting opportunities for phase one, the conceptual plan. We really want to have throughout the shelter process a fair and transparent process. The first meeting we did, the project kickoff meeting, we had 70 or so folks attend our open house at the Elk Grove Library. We had some theme stations where they could give input on what they liked or didn't like, different pictures of different shelters, and what they wanted in services, and kind of the design aesthetic that they preferred. We then had a second meeting, an online meeting for those who maybe weren't able to make it out to one of the in-person meetings, with live polling and breakout sessions. Again, we did a little bit of the design aesthetic and what people were hoping to see and what their concerns were about the shelter. And then we had, last week, a third meeting where we unveiled the conceptual plan, kind of a diagram of the building that you'll see in a few minutes, and some vignettes of what the inside of the shelter and the outdoor, private outdoor area of the shelter could look like. We also, during this time, ran a community feedback online survey. We got a total of 303 responses to that, which we feel is a pretty good number for this type of survey. What we heard, we asked- What we heard, we asked a few different questions and this is just a few of the highlights from it. So what guests, what our residents wanted to see prioritized for shelter guests was, number one, mental health counseling. We're really fortunate where the current shelter is to be located really close to the core well, the core center, where a lot of people go for mental health services and also for some addiction services. So addiction recovery and harm reduction was also a priority. Folks wanted to make sure that the shelter facility would have showers and hygiene areas. And then, of course, job training and employment support. And our current shelter contract has a full-time employment specialist aimed at connecting folks with jobs. And that's something we hope to continue. In terms of qualities of a successful shelter, we, and again, there was no locations as a part of Phase One. So this is just generally, people represented that access to public transit was important, that it was important to consider whether the shelter would be near schools or parks and how close it would be to healthcare and service providers. And there was a preference that this be located on vacant land or undeveloped land as opposed to an adaptive reuse. At the community events, we had an opportunity for folks to place, you can see in the photo here, green or red dots on things they liked or didn't like, and also to give comments on those. So in talking to folks at the sessions and what we saw from the comment cards, very strong support for including families in the permanent shelter and also really a lot of support for keeping pets with people, which our current shelter does. We have had both cats and dogs in that shelter and that's, that's worked out really well at getting folks to accept shelter. We saw some comments related to, you know, balancing compassion with accountability, that we don't provide shelter forever if someone's not moving forward in the ways that are appropriate for them. Some requests for some multipurpose spaces in the new shelter that would be able to host different types of activities like job training sessions or volunteer groups coming in to serve meals. Folks really wanted to focus on services like life skills, helping folks get their GED if they don't already have that or a high school diploma, and job training, and a lot of thoughts about what types of job training could be offered. And generally, folks wanted the shelter to feel connected and integrated into the community rather than isolated off on its own. So what, where we ended up, and NJA will talk a little bit more about this, is, you know, we want a shelter that's pet and partner friendly. That was important to our community and we have one now and that's working. We want to adjust the beds a little bit. Right now, we have 30 beds and five emergency beds for adults. At the new shelter, we're considering 20 beds and then five emergency beds. So 25 beds for adults, but then adding four family units. And those could be combined so that if we had a larger family, that they would have a couple of rooms that they could move back and forth between. A commercial kitchen is very important to us in this. One of the things that we would like to do is get back to having more volunteer groups serve meals. And many of them like to prepare the meals themselves. And that is only possible if there's a commercial kitchen and someone with a food manager card on site. The current shelter does not have that. And so we do want to offer that at the new shelter. It also is a really good workforce training opportunity. Food service has been a good source of employment for some of the folks that have gone through the shelter and actually, you know, provides ample income to get affordable housing. And so we've been able to make some connections there. Some other considerations, you know, having a trauma-informed design, someplace that people want to stay, making sure that we have adequate office space so that we can offer mental health counseling onsite. We can offer private case management meetings. And then that we have an interior and exterior that fits the area of the community that the shelter is located in. So I will now turn it over to folks from NJA, Jake and John. And they have a presentation that I will bring up.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers. My name is Jacob Burry. I'm a principal architect with NJA Architecture. We are really pleased to support the city in this effort to develop a future shelter. Working in Elk Grove, we've been really struck by how involved your community is. It's a community that is engaged on this issue and a community that truly cares about this issue. We have visited your current temporary shelter and we've reached out to a number of providers up and down the state with different service models to make sure that we're creating a solution that is going to pick and choose the best parts and bring them here to Elk Grove. We've also talked to your local volunteer organizations and I think you have a great asset here. Elk Grove Heart is a great example. They have been a really inspiring group. They do transformative things for this community and for this population. And we've been really inspired by the work that they do. And we'd like to encourage that kind of volunteerism in this future shelter. As Sarah said, we have engaged the community in a series of community outreach events so far. So we've done in-person events and virtual events as part of the Phase One efforts. The first event we held at the Elk Grove Public Library, we engaged in discussions with community members along with city leaders, the homeless navigators and law enforcement. So we had direct conversations, we asked questions, and we gave people an opportunity to share their ideas. We offered a variety of feedback mechanisms from very low-barrier activities with red and green dots so that people could share in a very kind of low-stress way what they liked and what they didn't like. We had activity cards so that people could have sort of a self-guided tour of the potential components, the services that could be offered, the spaces that could be included within the homeless shelter. We had comment cards so that participants could leave more detailed responses. And we also encouraged participation in an online survey. So through this variety of media, we collected a lot of information that formed a feedback loop. So the information that we received in the first meeting informed what we brought to the second meeting, which was a virtual session. Those lessons were pulled into the last meeting at District 56. So this isn't a static process. We're taking the information that we learned. We're taking the values that the community brings to this project and we're having it change the space, change the idea of what this shelter can be. And the story that really emerges is one of strong community support for a permanent solution for the city. Safety and security came out as the top concerns, both for guests and for the neighborhood. And the community is looking for this to be a comprehensive solution. So rich services wrapped around the shelter. It's not just a bed, but it's really addressing the root causes of homelessness so that we can really rehabilitate the guests, get them back as functioning members of society. And we've also seen that there is a great willingness from community members to engage. People want to attend meetings, they want to volunteer, they want to learn what's happening, they want to share their ideas and be involved as part of the process. And they also shared that design really matters. And the quality of the spaces, making sure that we are leaning into trauma-informed design and creating restful, restorative spaces is very important. As we start to look at the building program ideas, this is sort of a conceptual level bubble diagram of how spaces can interact without any consideration of a specific site. These are the key pieces that make the shelter function. Something important right from the start to note is that there's a clear separation between the family component and the individual adult component of the shelter. That's something they came across loud and clear from city staff and from members of the community, that making sure we prioritize the safety of families and children, give them their own spaces where they can rest and relax and find their way back on their feet. So the core of the building is core services and administrative functions. That is shared between the family component, which is shown on the left-hand side screen, and the adult component, which is at the top of the screen. So all of the case management, specialty services, directors, meeting spaces, as well as all of the core utilities, laundry, electrical, mechanical, storage areas, and the security apparatus, as well as some space for volunteers, again, to make sure that they have a home, they have an operating space. Those are all located within the core. The family zone has a shared common area that would include a kitchenette, a dining space, and a day room with a lounge, as well as a dedicated outdoor space. So a small playground where the kids can get outside and, you know, plant the grass. The family rooms are individual spaces. So each family group would have its own private room. For large families, as Sarah noted, those rooms can be interconnected so the family could utilize a couple at a time if they needed to. And then the families also have private restrooms with showers, toilets, and sinks. So safety and security, again, paramount. On the adult side, we have a large multipurpose space which would serve for group dining as well as educational and training functions. We've got a couple lounge spaces for collaborative activities or just restful, restorative, private space. And these areas open out to a secure outdoor courtyard. So guests have a restorative outdoor area as well. The kitchen space opens onto the multipurpose dining space and we are incorporating an area for instruction so the guests can learn to take care of themselves once they find housing. They can also be trained for a future job in a restaurant. So it serves a few different functions. And then lastly, we've got a dedicated computer room, job resource room, so they can prepare their resumes and get back into the workforce. This plan is just another variation, so same components. Utilizing this core as a hub of shared services, we can move the parts and pieces around while still maintaining that separation, that security, and all of the functionality of the building. So as we move into Phase Two and we start to look at available sites around the city, this building can flex.
Thank you, Jake. I think another important thing to mention too on this site diagram, or the floorplan diagram, is sightlines. So again, security was our number one concern, a lot with our community engagements and also the survey. So this is, as you see, a lot of clear sightlines, a central hub for administration, kind of point of entry. Again, yeah, sightlines are going to be pretty important. You don't want a lot of neanderine hallways in the plan. So one of the elements that we wanted to do on the third community engagement session was to really take in a lot of the comments that we heard from the first two and kind of develop a, some vignettes of what, by taking those comments, what's some of the visions that we are, we're receiving from a lot of those comments and how that could, that vision could come to life. We don't have a building per se or a site, but we really wanted to maybe try to convey a design intent and get feedback for that design intent. So the first space that we selected was the, kind of the main reception area, the lobby. A lot of the feedback we received was they didn't want this to feel like an institution or institutional. They wanted to give this type of population or this underserved population dignity back into their lives. So having a reception area that greeted them in a warm and calming manner was something that we received on a lot of people's feedback. But also, security is very important. So having this space be a central hub for monitoring, also greeting people, this is going to be a referral-only, so there isn't walk-ins, but still having a point of contact when you come in and that point of contact is aware of activity, of people coming and going from this facility. Also, sightlines, very important. Another aspect that we focused on was a secured green space. So instead of having those that need to go outside onto the city streets, it's really important to have a secured and isolated green space. Not only, you know, to, you know, provide a space for them to be outside, but this also helps transition them from being primarily outdoors to adjusting to an indoor environment. An outdoor space that is secured is going to be really important for their healing and that trauma-informed design principle. So another aspect is we don't want this to just be all hardscape. We think adding nice landscaping through this green, or this outdoor space will also promote that healing process. One of my favorite aspects of this currently is this multipurpose room. It was mentioned by Sarah and Jake that this space could be multi, you know, multifunctional. It could be for job training. It can be used, obviously, as a dining hall. It can also be served as where volunteers come in and that becomes a, kind of like a social space, an interaction. And also can act as maybe an overflow of a living room. There maybe is a TV and gives them an opportunity to gather and become a community within the shelter. And so in order to do that, we need to have adequate storage and also infrastructure for that. So just kind of making sure that the multipurpose space is flexible and can accommodate a wide variety of functions. And we don't want to add redundant dead space to the program. You know, we know resources are limited, so we want to make use of these funds as best as possible. And then you can see too, natural daylight. It's very important, again, to that being connected to the outdoors and having that natural daylight coming in. So we really wanted to show a lot of glass. Two other aspects that we studied for the third meeting was creating a flexible framework for sleeping arrangements. As Sarah mentioned, the pets is a really big component. It could be their only family member. So accommodating a space that can be adaptable for a pet is really important for this community. And then also accessibility. It was brought up a lot in the first meeting on a few members that a lot of people may have some mobility concerns. So making sure that everything was ADA, but also universal, met the universal. met the universal design standards. And then lastly, maybe having some coeds, so having some bigger space for a couple. And then lastly, the separate family quarters was mentioned, so we designed, again, to try to be efficient of space by maybe providing a bunk bed and some storage needs and a place for homework. It was mentioned in the third meeting by a member of the community is maybe having an outdoor area specifically for kids to play that's isolated from the outdoor area of the general. So I thought that was a really good comment from him. And, yeah, that's about it on that. The next steps, what we're looking towards, and Sarah will also kind of brush on this, is we are about to begin the site selection process. So we just finished the engagement of the community of obtaining ideas, but we don't want this to be the last. We want to continually keep the community active, and we want to hear their thoughts, their ideas, and some of their concerns. So we are conducting a survey that will be going live soon, and it will touch on some broad categories of what maybe is most important to the community of Elk Grove. That could be that this center is close to public transit, or that the center to be close to safety services like a police station, fire, or maintain distance away from schools and parks. So we would like to kind of assess what is most important, so that when we do the site selection process, we can hear and understand their concerns and make sure that we can try to best serve those concerns. So hand it off to Sarah.
I have a little bit more detail for you on how we will be doing the Phase Two community So the site selection is the hard part, the conceptual part, deciding what goes into it, what services, what it might look like, that's the fun part. Site selection part is hard, so this is a little bit about where we are and where we're hoping to go. We started this process with about, we did, our internal staff team looked at the whole field of sites, about 130 possible sites in the city as our working universe, and we've narrowed that down. We've dropped unsuitable sites, sites that were too small. We know that we need about .7 acres for this, so sites smaller than that wouldn't work. Sites that were too large, where we didn't really have, you know, any clear plan on what we might do with the rest of the site. Sites with development plans, all of those were dropped. And so we tried to narrow it down to about 20 sites, that we ultimately would like to narrow down to about eight to 10 sites to do a full feasibility analysis on, which NJA will do for us, and test fit. If we tried to use this site, how would we get that building diagram on that site? And then we will be scoring those sites under some site criteria review, which they briefly touched on, and I have a little bit more information on, and ultimately hoping to get to about four sites that we would release in January for public engagement, two plus in-person community meetings, and as well as virtual options for comment. So in the near term, what we are looking to do is release an online survey. This will be about what are people's site criteria? What's important to them when we're choosing a site? Is it important that it be near public transit? Is it important that it be near jobs? Is it important that it have easy accessibility for our police and emergency services? We have a lot of factors we, you know, we're hoping to get some feedback on. We're anticipating putting out the survey next week, so looking forward to some of your feedback tonight on factors that you want to see. And then having it available about three weeks, and then coming back to the council on October 22nd to share with you what we've heard from the community and hopefully align on a set of criteria that we can use to figure out which sites ultimately will move forward. And then in January, we'll have a couple of community meetings around the site specifics, as well as some online comment opportunities. We were able to get the word out a lot of ways for the Phase One meetings. We plan to use all of those ways again here, plus mailers to residents in proximity. So we will be doing some postcards that go out to folks who have businesses or homes that are near the potential sites. So when we're looking at citing criteria, we want to look at five main areas. Accessibility, how easy is it for folks to get around inside and outside of the shelter? So walkability and bikeability. We have a lot of folks who get around on bikes, who are at our current shelter. Ideally, something nearby public transit for those who use that, and making sure that we have universal accessibility on the shelter property for folks who have mobility considerations. We want to find out a little bit about how folks feel about compatibility. Is it important that the shelter fit within the neighborhood character? How would it integrate into the community? Is it important that the neighborhood accept it? Or how important is neighborhood opposition to folks when we're looking at sites? And then equitable distribution of resources throughout the city. Safety and security, some ideas that we've had on that topic are the ability for emergency services to reach the site quickly and to be able to transport people quickly in case they need to go to the hospital. It does not happen often, but we want to make sure that that is available when needed. A site layout that incorporates feedback from our police department on safety, facilitating visibility, easy access, controlled access, so we can control who's coming and going easily from that site and can have cameras throughout to make sure that we know what's going on. And then also possibly looking at the neighborhood crime rates in that scoring criteria. Adjacency and proximity is a huge thing. Do folks want to see sites near services that people need, like healthcare opportunities, jobs, grocery stores? Are we looking to avoid conflict with sensitive uses like residences or certain businesses? How close should it be to a school, a park, or a library, or other public uses? And then, of course, feasibility and cost are always a consideration. Can we build this? Can we afford to build this on this site? So zoning, land use, environmental considerations, how easy it is to get infrastructure at the site. Can the site meet our timeline so that we'll have a shelter that opens around the time that our lease ends on the other shelter? And just overall cost. So those are some of the criteria that we're hoping to cover with folks in the survey. Definitely interested in the council's perspective on that. Are there things you see here that we've missed, or, you know, that you'd really especially like us to include? Just a quick recap of the timeframe here. Sharing the survey next week, back at council, October 22nd. Doing that full analysis of the sites, of eight to 10 sites between October and December, and then narrowing it down to the four sites that we put out publicly in January, with hopefully the council selecting a site in February next year. That's it for my presentation. Love to have your feedback.
Wow. Lot there, excellent information. All right. At this time, I will open up the public comment opportunity. I do not have anyone signed up. I'll close public comment. Just before I open up to my colleagues, I wanted to ask, in terms of our community outreach, are we talking to our residents at the Calvary Christian site, or unhoused there, for criteria? Just, you know, I'd love to hear their feedback.
Yes, NJA did some interviews with the folks who are currently at or were at one point at the shelter site.
Excellent, excellent, okay. I'll, let's see, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Bontrager, thank you so much for this presentation, and thank you for the development and just letting us know, you know, as you were walking us through it. I felt like it was a wellness center. Like, I just really dislike the name Shelter, because it's, you don't even want to go there, right? It feels like you're just, there's no hope. But this, the way you talked about even the reception and the furniture, and being good stewards of the money, but allowing there to be green space, allowing there to be a lot of light. When you're going through this trauma of healing, right, you want all of that to be surrounded by beautifulness, right? And I can't thank you enough for really just taking the time to, one, to reach out, to seek, to understand what's going on in all of California, and more so primarily to help heal. I think that's the one component that folks might not be listening. They'll see a homeless shelter or a permanent shelter, but they won't understand the healing aspect and the process of that. That goes a long ways. It might not be in a day, it might not be in two days, but it might be in a few weeks after that. And we can see that through the design, through the furniture, through the lighting, through the greenery, so thank you for that. And Ms. Bontrager, thank you for that as well, putting that in the forefront. I think when we think about folks who are struggling and who don't have housing or are suffering from substance abuse or anything of that sort, we don't ever understand the trauma behind that, and we're putting people first on this. I know folks in the community can get riled up by saying, "Not in my backyard," but I want to stick to the point where healing is emphasized, because through that is breakthrough, through that is job opportunities, through that is, you know, making yourself better and then going from there, and potentially even coming back as a volunteer to make sure that the next person who's also at that center will also be, have a breakthrough and go. So I really do appreciate this. Looking forward to seeing the site selection and looking forward to hearing more. Thank you, thank you. It's really well thought out.
Thank you for your comments, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Brewer?
No, I want to thank Ms. Bontrager and NJA for the presentation, giving us, and giving us a feel for what the public is looking at, and what they would like to see. And I also really appreciate your reaching out to the people, to the residents who are inside the current location over at Calvary Christian, and just learning from them and learning from past residents there, because I think that gives us a good feel for how we can directly address the needs. And just having that public feedback in conjunction with that will definitely connect some of the dots. I know we had talked about in the past of what we'd like to see and how we'd like to have access to health care, having access to highway accessibility, being on transit veins, and trying to figure out how we can actually make all of these things happen just for the benefit of helping people getting back on their feet. And that definitely helps in figuring out how we do that, but also in showing us how the complex will look. It's a campus that looks like it could fit into any community, and that's, those are the things that we like to see, because we do have current permanent shelters within the city that are inside neighborhoods, and they've blended in. And so it's one of those dynamics where doing the right thing and being there definitely marries who we are as a city and as a community. And I'm very intrigued and very interested in looking at the next phase of what that looks like, but really take a hearty and active, engaging approach as we look at the potential sites, how they fit in, and how they actually do their part in creating some synergy that can be positive and nurturing. So thank you again, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Brewer. Councilmember Spies?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So first, I think, you know, just .7 acres seems to make a lot of sense in terms of size, but I want to challenge a little bit further, because if we take the number 83, that was our point in time study, let's hope it never gets bigger. I think most of us are aware that that number's actually bigger, but let's go with the point in time count of 83. As we work to get closer to zero, because I hope that's our goal, right? Our goal is to get out of this work one day, right? Knowing, of course, that the hardest point is the last mile. If you talk to anybody in construction or putting something in, it's always the last mile, it's always the last bit that takes the longest to get there, right? So I could see a day when we're getting, say, from 83 to perhaps, I don't know, let's just use 60 or 40, right? Say we get to 40. It is entirely possible that the 40 that remain will not be responsive in any way, shape, or form to a shelter, right? These are folks who may have someplace to go right now, but for their habits and for their condition, right, do not, cannot live in homes with their families, unfortunately. Okay? So my concern is that, and my desire is to make it as small as possible. Now, what is that number? I don't know. I think 2025 might be about that, right? But I want to challenge you to really think about that, because my concern then comes to building a, or putting a building in someone's neighborhood that eventually, hopefully soon, within a couple of years, right, wouldn't be occupied, right? Because that's when you're getting to about 60. So what I'm going to ask you to do is, I like the bubble diagrams, I'm not looking at the bubble diagrams and saying that those are hard-sided or anything like that. What I'm asking to do is to make sure that we plan or allow for a secondary use, because if we, I mean, I know we want to make it warm and welcoming and all of that stuff, I get it, right? These are human beings who deserve compassion. At the same time, making it far too comfortable is also a problem, okay? And I'm not suggesting it has to be Spartan, and I'm not suggesting they have to sleep on the floor, that would be completely wrong. I think about the way that we have it right now is about, it's comfortable. It's, you know, it's not great, but it's comfortable. So what I would ask, particularly when it comes to the living spaces, that those not be hard-sided. I understand that showers will likely need to be hard-sided in some form or fashion, restrooms need to be hard-sided, but what I would like to see is relocatable or reconfigurable space, so that when we do get to this, hopefully soon, secondary use, which could be Boy Scouts meeting place, it could be for a number of the, we call it, the nonprofits that are always begging us for space, right? So I just want to make sure we do that. There was something else that just escaped my memory. Proximity to police services is very important, and again, we have to be compassionate. Nobody's looking to frighten anyone, nobody wants that. That said, proximity to the police station might have folks who want to hang around the facility and wait a turn to get in, it might make them move on because they know that, well, PD's next door, right? So I like generally where it's going. I would, again, challenge you to try to make the footprint as small as possible. I think there will always be some sort of need for a shelter, but we have to look for a secondary use, because in a few years, when hopefully, if we're doing our work right, we'll get to a point where unfortunately, some will not come in. So I think that's it. I think I beat the dead horse. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. I like what I'm seeing. I guess I'm not as optimistic. I think what we've seen in the numbers from the Gathering Inn, we have great stories that we celebrate, but people also continue to fall into homelessness. That number is not finite, that, okay, using 80 or whatever, we meet their needs, it's done, we've solved homelessness. People will continue to fall into homelessness. I just can't imagine that need goes away. I wish, I'm hopeful, but I'm also, I guess cautiously realistic in that people will continue to fall into homelessness. And so for us, as our city continues to grow... having the resources for, for, you know, for our growing need, I don't know that the need just disappears or is to a point where it's so low that we, we may be changing the use of this facility. It's good to be adaptable, for sure. I guess I, I'm just not as um optimistic that that need will disappear in a few years. I think we will have great success stories, absolutely, but we'll continue to have those that will always need um this type of uh facility and resource. We've seen that in pretty much every city. And the more we work towards this, this zero or fifty, sixty, whatever the number is where we don't maybe think we need this um type of facility, we're going to inevitably see a growing number of people continue to uh need these kinds of services. So I like what I'm seeing. I like our, our Vice Mayor's comments on sort of a wellness center. What I really appreciated was our community's desire to see something a little bit more dignified, that it's not just a bunch of cots and separation, that this is, you know, it's not a fancy hotel, it's still a homeless shelter, but also providing that comfort. Um, we get to design this from the ground up. We have what we have because that's all we had um at the Cavalry Christian Center. So we did a great job with um our limited location. So we're providing excellent resources there and providing those hands-on needs. Um, I love the, the family space. I think that is fantastic because we will see families in need. And so this is being proactive in that response. Pet-friendly, of course. Um, I, I just lost my, my, I can't say. I just lost my dog of fifteen years um early this morning. And I, I know they're family. I saw my little fur baby as another child. And I know others do too. Pets mean everything to not just our own house. It's just, it's the reality. They are family. So having the pets incorporated, having the family. But I really loved our community's response of having something just a little bit better than perhaps any shelter. That human dignity goes a long way. And the wraparound services that they will need, we'll see those sort of graduate out of the program. And unfortunately, we'll, we'll continue to see others falling into homelessness because it's not just affordable housing, there's mental health, there's other, all of the root causes. There's so many. And so I, I wish, I prayed one day that we wouldn't have this issue anywhere. But I'm glad that we are prepared and um we will, I'm looking forward to the next phase of site selection. There will be something in every council district, so it isn't, you know, we'll be able to look at it sort of in a, in a holistic approach and ultimately make the decision that meets the needs of the community. And be prepared, we will inevitably see neighborhoods coming in here with pitchforks, yelling and screaming. We know that that's happening, it's happening in other communities, but we have to do this. We have to do this and I'm so pleased to see the renderings and, and all of the great work. So thank you to Sarah um and your team and everybody else involved. Um, great work all around. Thank you. So this is not an action item, so we will move on to our next, which is item nine point three.
And item nine point three is to receive information on proposed changes to the business license application and renewal process and fee structure and provide direction to staff.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Vice Mayor and Councilman. My name is Tish Mann. I'm an economic development analyst. And with me is Cara Taylor Seaman, a finance manager. And in the audience is another integral member um to our team, Jenny Taugh, customer service representative. And we're here to present a, a presentation on Business License Two Point O, which is an initiative about updating and streamlining the business license application and renewal process. And our recommendation this evening is to receive information on proposed changes to the business license application and renewal process and fee structure and provide direction to staff. We want to start this presentation by highlighting some of council goals pertaining to a high-performing and financially stable city government. Um, the subgoals that we want to highlight are maintain and strengthen the fiscal health and stability of the city, embrace new ideas and innovation in the delivery of services, provide responsive and courteous customer service, promote DEI within the city organization and the larger community, and maximize investments in innovation to improve the lives of residents and streamline operations. Um, all of these goals relate to the Business License Two Point O initiative and what we hope to accomplish with it. And so this initiative is really a joint effort between the Office of Economic Development and Finance, um with a lot of perspective from the Community Development Department. And again, our goal is to update and streamline the business license application and renewal process. And this project is identified as an implementing action in the city's general plan. And to illustrate the impact of an initiative like this, three hundred twenty-two new business license applications were processed last year and one thousand four hundred and six renewals were processed last year. So what were the key drivers that led us to look into a new business license software? We wanted to make the application and renewal process as easy and as user-friendly and as online-friendly as possible. We wanted to improve customer satisfaction after receiving a number of complaints about the business license process. We want to simplify management for staff by streamlining and automating manual processes. And we want to increase compliance and accuracy of registries so you can have higher quality data. And finally, want to capture better demographic data so we can understand our business owners better. So the first thing we did is we did a comprehensive review of our business license uh process and we found a number of errors for improvement. Uh, first, a complex and frustrating customer experience. Jenny has a great list of a number of different complaints from applicants that she's collected over the years. Um, but I'll just describe one example, which is that sometimes people have a frustrating experience at home when they're trying to apply for the business license online. So they actually come in person to the counter um to complete the process instead of just being able to do it online. And then from a backend processes standpoint, we saw some inefficient workflows requiring manual workarounds for staff. And when staff is doing manual work, manual processes, it can lead to human error and compromise the quality of the data. And from a finance standpoint, we noticed an outdated fee structure that does not incorporate cost recovery. And then from a community development standpoint, um, we noticed that there are no zoning and occupancy checks in the license process. So again, just the software challenges. We were seeing something complex, something inefficient, outdated, not user-friendly, and that was leading to businesses either not completing the process or submitting inaccurate information in their applications. And then one example of a manual backend process is how the special business license process, which requires going to PD, getting a live scan, is all paper-based and it's all manual. And then you have the general um business license application on Central Square. And then you have the renewals um on the Formstack and it's very fragmented. And so the system just in general does, uh, it lacks the automation and the flexibility and intuitive workflows that you would see in a modern business license software. So what did we do? We evaluated alternative business license software solutions. There are a number of companies out there that specifically make with software applications for business licensing for jurisdictions and local government agencies. And so we sat in on a few custom demos with them and got some initial pricing. So we're looking at, for a one-time setup implementation fee, uh, we're seeing numbers like sixty, or sorry, eighty thousand dollars to a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. And then for the annual subscription, we're seeing anything from thirty thousand dollars to ninety thousand dollars. And we're also in discussions with our current provider, Central Square. We're going to see if they can meet our needs and if they can just make some upgrades to the business license process, then great, we'll stick with them. And if we do that, that will come at no additional cost because we're already customers. And in the process of reviewing our processes, um, Community Development observed that we have not done zoning and occupancy checks in the license process since two thousand and twelve. Uh, at the time, council directed staff to remove them because they were um seen as too time-consuming and costly. Council's goal was to promote business friendliness and streamline applications. And uh we also want to note, in two thousand and twelve, we also did not have the technology we have today. We are able to streamline zoning and occupancy checks much quicker now. Um, but this led to issues, namely license, licenses being issued to businesses not compliant with zoning or building codes. So a retail business could come in and they could apply for a business license using an app, or using an address, and then they would get approved and get their license. Then they'd go set up shop at that address and start operating, only to find out later that, yeah, code enforcement says, "Hey, you're a commercial business and you're operating in an industrial zone. Now you have to explore options, including relocation." And so that's something that could be um prevented with a zoning check in the license process. And then similar thing on the, this, or the building side. A business owner could get a business license and start operating in a building, but it turns out that the building hasn't gone through review with external agencies like fire, health, and sewer at minimum. And the building doesn't have a CFO, but the business owner has a license to operate there. It's just contradictory. So um these issues lead to code enforcement cases, violations, fines, and relocations. And so let's talk about zoning checks a little bit. We did research into jurisdictions across the state and in our region and found that zoning checks are best practice. And what a zoning check would look like is staff would re, uh, review the proposed business use and decide if it was allowed by right, prohibited, or if it needs a use permit. And if it needed a use permit, the building or the business license would be placed on hold until the business owner gets their CUP or whatever. And then we release the business license once that is obtained. And we estimate that a zoning check would take thirty minutes of staff time, translating that to costs, that would be fifty-five dollars to ninety-three dollars per zoning check based on uh these, you know, billing ranges. But this is all pending fee study. We recommend doing a comprehensive fee study to understand the true costs behind staff time. And so some cities also incorporate a building occupancy check. And this would verify that the building is in compliance with building and fire codes and um has a valid certificate of occupancy. And the idea is you wouldn't release the business license until they have CFO. However, this could be a lengthy process. It could take weeks to months because each regulatory agency, fire, sewer, health, has its own process and its own timeline. And you would need approvals for all of them to get the CFO. And there could be building modification discussions as well, making the process even more drawn out. So that, that's what an occupancy check might look like. Uh, we estimate seventy percent of the time, the checks could be simple and only take a couple of days. For example, if the new business is very similar to the old business. Uh, but thirty percent of the time, we estimate these checks to take weeks or months. For example, a complex case would be if the new business is very dissimilar to the old business. And the cost of an occupancy check, it's difficult to estimate. We'd need to do fee study to determine the costs. And Cara will take over from here.
So um the next several slides are going to talk about um the city's fee structure um and a review of practices in nearby cities. Um, this slide shows the seven cities that, that the staff has researched. Of those, all seven do require occupancy checks. Um, two, I'm sorry, all seven require zoning checks. Two do require occupancy checks and one requires occupancy checks just in limited cases. This table, or this slide summarizes the current fee structure that the city uses. In two thousand and twelve, again, the application fee for general business licenses was reduced. It had been a hundred and ten dollars for a general business license and is now, and then was reduced to twelve dollars. Um, and that was to promote business friendliness um within the city. That fee has not increased. It continues to be twelve dollars for a general business license. Um, there is a state fee making the total sixteen dollars and that is good for two years. If there is a special business license that's required, then in addition to the general business license, um, there's an application fee of a hundred and twenty-five dollars and then a background check of forty-nine dollars. The special business license fee is good for one year. So the issues with the current process, number one, there hasn't been any updates since two thousand and twelve. Um, our current fees do not pay for the costs to process and track new and renewed business licenses. And as a result, the general fund is subsidizing the cost, um, staff time um to, to administer the program. Um, and then, as you'll see here in a second, nearby jurisdictions all charge higher, much higher fees than the city of Elk Grove. Um, those costs, um, those fees do reflect cost recovery and in some cases, revenue generation. So again, these are the same seven cities that we queried. The fees among those cities are based on a variety of factors and can include business type, operations, taxes, the number of employees, and gross sales. Um, additionally, those nearby jurisdictions, um, the flat fees, which would be similar to the city of Elk Grove. In all of those other jurisdictions, flat fees range from approximately a hundred dollars up to around five hundred dollars. Um, there are several cities here, as you note, um, where there's an additional fee that is either a percentage of sales or a percentage of revenue. So staff did some preliminary estimates. Um, these are, these are very preliminary and we are again recommending a uh comprehensive fee study. But our preliminary estimates would be that to capture processing time for zoning checks and cost, uh, software cost recovery, the special business license would be approximately two hundred dollars. For a special business license or tobacco business license, that cost would be approximately three hundred and fifty dollars. Now, if we were to also include occupancy checks, that would add two hundred dollars for each type of business license. Um, the staff, the staff is looking for your guidance, but we do have three recommendations. Um, the first recommendation, we are recommending that a comprehensive fee study be conducted, um, including full cost recovery for applications, renewals, and zoning checks. Second, staff recommends that we work with our current vendor, Central Square, um, to determine if their solution will meet our current needs. Um, and if not, we would like to pursue an RFP for an appropriate um solution and vendor. Again, those additional costs would be included in a business license fee pending that fee study. And then finally, staff recommends that zoning checks be incorporated into the process and associated costs be included, again, pending the fee study. Due to cost and time constraints, occupancy checks are not being recommended um at this time, although we can come back and reconsider those. So staff have three main recommendations for which we are seeking council direction. The first is the fee structure um with a comprehensive fee study. The second is software, either working with Central Square to determine if they can help us and meet our needs, or if not, issue an RFP for another option. Um, and then third, incorporating zoning checks into the process, but holding off on occupancy checks at this time. Regarding um the fiscal impact, if council directs us to update the fee structure and capture all fees, uh, staff estimates that the reliance on the general fan, general fund will either be reduced or potentially eliminated. Um, actual impact of that will be, is dependent on the fee study. Um, otherwise, the general fund will continue to subsidize um the administration of our business license program. This concludes our recommendations. Thank you for your time. And Tish and I are both available for your questions.
Thank you. At this time, I will open up public comment. Uh, I don't have anyone signed up. I'll close public comment. And I'll start to the right. Questions, comments, feedback?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. If you could go back to the slide of um where you had the two hundred dollars for the, keep going.
That one.
Okay, right there. Okay, um, okay, so you're including, you're including the potential of the zoning check into the two hundred dollars.
Exactly.
Okay, so let me ask you this. In, in, I can understand the first year, in subsequent years, would you be doing a zoning check?
No, the zoning check would be done just at the first year.
Okay, so I guess what I would then suggest, or, okay, so is, is that second year two hundred dollars required to subsidize maybe the fact that you're doing two hundred for everybody? Where I'm going, where I'm driving at is if you're not doing a zoning check in the second year, when you look at it, is it possible to make, to bring that lower?
You know, um, in your example, a new business license, the process is different than renewals. And so that, we would recommend, you know, un, unearthing all of that and understanding it better through the fee structure. But you're exactly right, or the fee study, but you're exactly right. That second year is, is less costly to staff and to the city than the first one.
Yeah, I mean, the hardest part is when you're starting a business, that, I mean, and I don't want to minimize two hundred dollars. I don't want to minimize it at all, right? But when you're starting a business, that's the time you really don't want to have to spend a whole lot of money. Um, and so somebody might say, "Twelve dollars, two hundred dollars, what are they doing," right? Um, but a zoning check makes sense, right? Especially if you get into a situation where you're going to be spending a heck of a lot more money than two hundred dollars if you have to move. more money than $200 if you have to move. So I like it. I would like to do a cost recover, or to do a fee study. I would like to have the zoning check in there, but I would also like to see if there's a way that in further years or later years, you can bring that price down.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Brewer?
So if, if we were to go down this road and do the study for the cost recovery and make some, and make the fees, make the change in the fees, where would, where would we stack up in comparison to the cities, the cities in the region and the county? Would that have us on the upper end of the scale or towards the middle?
Prelimarily, we estimate it would be, we would be in the middle. Some of these, the city of Woodland, they have a flat fee that goes up to $500. So, you know, we would come back with recommendations and with actual results, but we expect at this time to be somewhere in the middle.
Okay.
But first year?
For the first year.
Exactly.
And by, but, and by doing that, I mean, you, there was a, as part of the recommendation, there was a mention on fiscal impact, that that would make it, that would minimize, if not wipe out, with any sort of fiscal discrepancy that we would have on that structure? Or, or was I, or did I miss something on that?
On the, excuse me, let me find it here. So on the fiscal impact right now, because our fees are so low than staff time and is really, it just goes to the general fund. So if we revisit this and come back with full cost recovery, then we hope to eliminate the reliance on the general fund. If we land somewhere in the middle, then we would just reduce the, the impact or the subsidy and dependency on the general fund.
Okay. Now, those were the two questions I had. Definitely, I like the presentation. The rationalization of why we're, we're doing this is actually helpful. Just making sure that, as we work with some of our business partners and prospective business partners, that as they go through, that they have a full understanding of, of what they're paying in terms of fees and why. I think that definitely helps us in, in closing that delta.
Right.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate, appreciate the presentation. No questions as of right now.
Thank you. I support what, what you've outlined here. I think you've made a pretty strong, compelling case, streamlining the process. So thank you. No further questions either. Thank you. All right. With that, we will move on to item 9.4.
Item 9.4 is to consider appointment of one voting member to the Disability Advisory Committee. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. I'm Jason Lincoln, your City Clerk. We opened up a recruitment. The quick story is we have one applicant, we have one vacancy. The fit seems pretty straightforward. When the applicant did submit their application, they did say that they would be traveling and out of the country for the date of this scheduled hearing. So I do not believe they are here in attendance for this evening.
All right, well, I will move, I believe his name is Joe?
Correct. Joe Xavier.
Yes, so we will, I'd like to move, there was, I, I did see another application, but that was for Sacramento, somebody from Sacramento.
Unfortunately, they, the postal service designates that they live in Elk Grove, but they actually do live north of the city jurisdiction.
So I just wanted to memorialize that on the record. But I'd like to move forward to Joe's application to fill this vacancy. Any questions?
Just as a quick check, I do not believe anyone signed up to speak on this item.
Yes, I'll open up public comment. Nobody's, you're right, nobody's signed up to speak. I'll close public comment and then move forward with Joe's application. Yeah, so that's it. Contensus is the only one. It's kind of easy. All right, next item, 9.5.
An item 9.5 is to consider appeal to the City Council regarding the decision of the City Manager to deny a petition to disqualify administrative hearing officer Katie Biloti Porter filed by Yasser Al-Jar with the Illusion Smoke Shop.
All right, Mayor, members of the Council, if I could just make a couple of remarks. This is a little bit of an unusual matter. We don't see these very typically. In fact, this might be the first time in my history of the city that this particular process has been used. So essentially, this comes up in the context of an administrative appeal of a revocation of a tobacco license for a tobacco shop that has been found by staff to be in violation of the various local and state laws. When that happens, an administrative hearing officer is appointed to hear the matter, neutral administrative hearing officer. The applicant has the ability, if they so choose, to challenge that hearing officer for cause, bias, prejudice, that sort of thing. And the applicant actually did that here. The, the challenge went to the City Manager who declined the request to disqualify the hearing officer. It's now coming to the City Council on appeal under our code. You should think of yourself as essentially judges for purposes of this, this hearing. You're acting in what we call a quasi judicial role. For that reason, the Assistant City Attorney Suzanne Kennedy and myself have decided to step away from acting as neutral advisors of the council because we're essentially acting in a prosecutorial or advocacy role. We do have, if you need assistance from a neutral legal advisor, we have Attorney Alex Hastings here to assist you, should you have any questions about that. The way that this will work is the applicant will be asked, if they are here, to come up and present their appeal. There was a written material, or some written material that was presented to the council by the applicant. You should consider that. There's also a staff report authored by Suzanne Kennedy, expressing the City Attorney's offices and code enforcement's position. So when the applicant, after the applicant speaks, if they are here, Ms. Kennedy will offer a presentation if you so choose. You can then take public comment, deliberate on the matter, and decide whether or not you want to affirm the decision of the City Manager to uphold the disqualification, excuse me, uphold the denial of the disqualification of the hearing officer, or reverse the City Manager and decide to disqualify the hearing officer for bias or prejudice. Happy to answer any questions about that as we go, as is Mr. Hastings.
All right, well, thank you. I would like to invite the applicant to present the appeal, if you are here. Anybody in the hallways? Last call for the applicant to present the appeal. Seeing no appellant present for the appeal, do we then, we'll invite staff up. Now, you're not responding to the appellant, but I'm maybe the correspondent?
Mayor, the appellant has actually submitted written materials, and so we will respond in that regard. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Suzanne Kennedy, Assistant City Attorney for the city of Elk Grove, and I'm here tonight to address Yasser Al-Najar's appeal of the City Manager's denial of his petition to disqualify hearing officer Katie Biloti Porter. Just some quick background on tobacco retailer special business licenses. Any tobacco retailer, any business that sells tobacco or tobacco-related products is required to maintain a city-issued special business license. It is a violation of the terms of their license to violate any local, state, or federal tobacco law, and that includes sales of tobaccos to persons under, under 21, with the exception of military personnel who must be over 18. And tobacco retailers in California are also not allowed to sell or possess with the intent to sell flavored tobacco products or flavored enhancers. If a tobacco retailer violates the terms of their license, their, the Elk Grove Municipal Code provides for suspension of their license and escalating terms for the first through third violation. It's a 30-day, 90-day, and then one-year suspension. And after a fourth violation within five years, the license will be revoked. The business at issue tonight is owned by Yasser Al-Najar, who is doing business as the Illusion Smoke Shop. They are located on the corner of Laguna Boulevard and Franklin Boulevard. And the issue before the mayor and council tonight involves the appeal or violation, a recent violation of the business and the administration, administrative process that followed, and their attempt to disqualify the hearing officer who has been assigned to hear that matter. And that is the issue before the City Council tonight. The city refutes the business owner's assertions with regard to both the prior violations, but also the basis for disqualifying, excuse me, the hearing officer. And you've received materials from the appellant, Yasser Al-Najar, through his attorney, up to and including earlier today. Because many of the issues raised by Mr. Al-Najar involve the prior enforcement actions, I'm going to give you a brief recitation of what those actions involve. In June of 2022, the Elk Grove Police Department conducted a minor decoy operation where the business was determined to have sold a tobacco product to a minor. That was in violation of the penal code, and thereafter, the city imposed a 30-day suspension of the business license. The city did engage in a series of discussions with the business and ultimately reached a settlement agreement where the city would rescind the 30-day suspension, and the business was going to take certain measures to ensure that they would comply with the law going forward. And that included training employees and implementing safeguards against illegal sales, such as installing card readers that could check to see the date of the individual's purchasing the products. On, in March of 2023, the Elk Grove Police Department again conducted a minor decoy operation where flavored tobacco was sold to a minor in violation of both the penal code and the Health and Safety Code, and also the settlement agreement that the business owner had entered into with the city where he agreed that they would comply with the law. In June of 2023, while operating on a suspended license, so they should not have been selling tobacco or tobacco products, the city conducted a compliance check where it was determined that the business continued to sell tobacco-related paraphernalia, which was not allowed under their suspended license. At that time, the city issued a 90-day suspension, which the business owner appealed, which went through the administrative hearing process. And that 90-day suspension was upheld by Administrative Hearing Officer Katie Biloti Porter, who is the same hearing officer assigned to hear the present case. Following that violation and the administrative decision, in September of 2023, the city again conducted a compliance check and found that the business continued to violate their license. They were operating on a suspended license at the time. They were fine, found to be selling flavored tobacco in violation of the Health and Safety Code and also the Elk Grove Municipal Code. At that time, the city issued a one-year suspension, and that was followed up by another compliance check on October 21st, 2023, where the city again found that the business was violating the terms of the municipal code through the sale of tobacco. At that time, because of the number of violations that preceded it, the city moved to revoke the special business license. At the request of the business owner, the city considered a settlement agreement which would allow the business to continue to operate. The business was required to pay a fine of just over $150,000, which was at their proposal. And the business owner expressly acknowledged that selling tobacco to minors and flavored tobacco product is illegal. That settlement agreement provided that any future violations would result in the immediate revocation of the special business license following an administrative hearing, and the business owner waived any right to further judicial review or appeal of that administrative Thereafter, recently in June of 2025, the Elk Grove Police Department conducted another inspection. This was the first of many inspections that were to have been conducted that day of other tobacco retailers within Elk Grove. But because of what was found that day, that was the only inspection they conducted. The Elk Grove Police Department found a hidden room within the business where hundreds of flavored tobacco products were possessed, and possessed in a manner that indicated that they were clearly possessed with the intent to sell. At that point in time, the city moved to revoke the special business license, and the licensee requested the administrative appeal, which has led us in the path here to the City Council today. A couple of notations on this latest violation. The appellant, Mr. Al-Najar, has alleged that the city and its enforcement actions are unfair and they're targeting small businesses. But the counter to that is that Mr. Al-Najar is operating unlawfully in a way that actually interferes with other lawfully operating businesses, small businesses. There's not a level playing ground for them. Additionally, all of the violations prior to the most recent have been resolved in to the extent that the business owner had the opportunity to peel those up even to court and chose not to. And you've seen some very passionate correspondence from the business owner objecting to the prior enforcement actions, but he could have taken that all the way up to the court to appeal, and he chose not to. And the settlement agreement essentially closed the door on that because he agreed that any future violations would result in revocation of his license. Here are some pictures of the hidden room. You can see the picture on the left. There's a cabinet with a glass backing. You can see the police officer standing in front of it, taking a picture. The middle picture shows that that cabinet is capable of being slid to the left. And within that room, you could see, organized on shelves, readily accessible to grab when customers come in and request a product, are all flavored tobacco products. There were hundreds of products within that room. Here's this sketch of the timeline of some of the points that have come up in this case with regard to the process. The most noteworthy out of this is that the city issued a notice of revocation in June of 2025, which was followed by a July 2nd, 2025, notice of hearing. And what's important about this notice of hearing is it was at this time, on July 2nd, that the administrative hearing officer was identified. So they knew who the, who was the assigned hearing officer at that time. The hearing was scheduled. It was continued once at the request of the business owner, continued a second time at the request of the hearing officer, who had a family matter she needed to attend to, and the hearing was eventually set to early September. On August 28th, 2025, almost two months after receiving notice of the identity of the hearing officer, the licensee, Mr. Al-Najar, through his attorney, finally filed his petition to disqualify her. That's almost two months of delay, and it caused the September 5th hearing that was scheduled to proceed to go off calendar in order to allow this process to play out. On September 4th, 2025, the City Manager denied that petition. The Elk Grove Municipal Code does provide a process for disqualification of a hearing officer. A hearing officer may be disqualified for bias, prejudice, interest, or for any other reason that a judge would be disqualified in a court of law. You'll see in the petition, the appeal raised to the City Council by the business owner, he's appealing on the basis of bias and prejudice. And the municipal code also provides that each party has the right to make one preemptory challenge without cause, which means for any reason or no reason at all, the business owner has at all times had the ability to disqualify the hearing officer. The process is that the appellant needs to first petition to the City Manager, and thereafter, the City Manager makes a determination on whether to grant the petition for disqualification, and then the decision of the City Manager may be appealed to the City Council. It is the city's position that the City Manager's decision to deny the petition should be upheld, and that's based on at least two bases. One, it is untimely. The code provides that a petition to disqualify must be brought after receipt of notice indicating the identity of the hearing officer, excuse me, or immediately upon discovery of such facts indicating bias, prejudice, or interest. So we know that he knew about the identity two months before the hearing was to be scheduled and delayed the filing until a time that it would delay the hearing. And that's important here because it's the city's belief that the business owner is delaying this process because during the pendency of it, his business license revocation has stayed. And that means that it's to his benefit to draw this out as long as possible because he gets to continue to operate. And we do believe that, given the facts in this case, that the city will prevail, which is why it's in his benefit to delay it as long as possible. Additionally, the city, it's the city's position that the business owner has not demonstrated bias or prejudice. The law provides that adverse hearing or adverse prior rulings, even erroneous ones, are not a legal basis for disqualification. And there are additional legal citations within the staff report for you on that point. And it seems, although the, the appellant is not here tonight to advocate for their position, their position is essentially twofold. One, that the hearing officer is prejudiced or biased against them, as evidenced by the prior ruling, and/or the prejudice or bias of the city has been adopted by the hearing officer. There are no facts to support that. Each of the prior cases, compliance checks, investigations were thoroughly founded by solid investigation. And the idea that the city is somehow biased or prejudiced against the business owner is, does not bear out particularly in light that the city did offer two prior settlement agreements that would allow the business to continue to operate, and it was the city's hope, particularly after the last settlement agreement where the business owner paid over $150,000. business owner paid over $150,000 to keep their license, that they would finally come into compliance, but they have not. And additionally, if the City Council were to deny the petition or essentially uphold the city manager's decision to deny the petition, they do still have the ability to challenge the hearing officer on their preemptory challenge. So with that, it is the city's request that City Council uphold the city manager's decision to deny the petition to disqualify the hearing officer. And included in the staff report with attachment one is a resolution to that effect. Should the City Council want to set aside the City Council's denial of that petition, an alternative resolution is provided at attachment two. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. At this time, I will open up public comment. I do not have anyone signed up to speak. I will go ahead and close public comment. And final call, if the appellant is outside in the hallways, this is your opportunity. I'm inviting the appellant to reply, rebut. Seeing nothing, I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and open it up for any questions or comments. I'll start to the right.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution upholding the city manager's denial.
Is that a second? All right, we have a motion and a second to uphold the city manager's denial. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, the motion passes unanimously for the record. All right, we've already addressed item number 10. So that takes us to council comments, reports, future agenda items. Councilmember Spies, anything to report?
I do, I wanted to bring up real quick, because there was a comment earlier about the SEC. So Sacramento Metropolitan Cable Television Commission is a commission on which I have the opportunity to participate. There are, I would say, three responsibilities of the Metropolitan Cable Television Commission. One, to administrate the, or two, to receive complaints from the public about cable. Second, to administrate the license fees and to ensure that they're distributed to the member agencies. And the third is to provide grants or assistance to channels like SEC as well as KVIE, Life TV, and others. It shouldn't be a surprise to most people that the, that cable, cable is on the decline. It's much like when you had a cellphone, or when you bought a cellphone, after a couple of years, you turned off your landline. People are now cutting the cable. People are going to the streaming services, et cetera. When they're cutting the cable, that means lower cable revenues. And what we have seen at the Cable Television Commission is that these revenues are declining and they are beginning to decline more and more rapidly. That will mean less money to our member agencies like ourselves. I think we get something in the area of like $2 million a year or something from that. But what that means is unfortunately for SEC, for KVIE, for Life TV, their assistance begins to dwindle as well. So last week, there was a meeting, unfortunately, I was unable to attend, but there was a meeting wherein there was discussion with the, with the channels that they, that their funding was to be cut. That decision has been held off for, you know, for another few months. But the reality is, well, I don't know where the, I don't know where the commission is necessarily going to go, but what I can tell you is that cable revenues will not increase. I can tell you that with great certainty, okay? So if you hear questions or you have concerns about the distribution, please, you know, I'm happy to answer questions. I'm happy to have our executive director come and give a presentation about it. It's really one of those issues of just like with the cellphone, the landline's going away now that everybody's going to cut the cable or cut the cord, right, and do streaming services. It's just less money for cable, so. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm glad that you provided that update because, as you know, I've received a few emails that I did share with you, so thank you for that. Councilmember Brewer.
So on September 17th, last Wednesday, as a representative for the Sacramento Regional Transit Board, I participated in the Capitol Corridor Joint Power Authority. They held their board meeting in Sassoon City. Just talking about service between the Bay Area and Sacramento, but specifically looking at the Davis Stop for some of the improvements that will be taking place over the next five to 10 years. On Thursday, the 18th, Sacramento Public Library Authority, through their committee of the Budget Audit Committee, we went over our mid-year numbers. And we will be voting on that item in, for the full board tomorrow at our regularly scheduled meeting at the Sacramento County Board Chambers at 700 H Street. And so that's what I have to report.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had our sewer meeting today and then nothing to report out of that. I did want to bring up, I have been getting contact from several residents. I know that last meeting, we had residents that talked about our folks who are suffering or our immigrant, our immigrant community, right? I know that we've taken a stance as a city of Elk Grove, but I would want to see if it's something that the council would like to perhaps pass or even consider viewing a resolution just standing in support of our immigrant community and those who are also in fear of ICE. If that's something that you guys would like to bring up and wanted to see if we can put that out there.
I think individually, we have made, I've made statements. I don't know if we need a resolution per se, that's just my opinion. I think we have a very strong position when it comes to inclusivity, where a city welcome to all is no place for hate. So I think it exists in forms, but you know, but that's just, I'd love to hear from you, but I I very openly have been very open about my, my statements. But if you think there's something missing, you know, let's hear what others have to say. Anything?
I think it's an important topic. I don't doubt that. I think there are other important topics that we have not addressed for the purpose of staying specifically to what our scope is. I think our daily statements every time about us being a city open to all should stand for itself. I am reluctant to, to wade into issues, not necessarily because of my beliefs relative to it, but to setting a precedence for every time there is something that someone disagrees with, much like other instances we've had, right? That we're suddenly weighing in on all of these things. I think that we stand for ourselves, we say for ourselves every single time, so.
Councilmember Brewer.
So I think, I think Councilmember Robles brings us with a good point. I definitely understand where Councilmember Spies is coming from, but I think what the Vice Mayor is, as he's leaned into this topic and has done it with great courage, I think it helps validate who we are as a city, what we stand for, our creed. We walk and talk with it every day. We definitely stand firm in our being a city welcome to all and really standing firm in our commitment to diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility. It's something that, even though it's, it's taken on more of a national tone, it's very local in scope. And it reaches across a lot of communities. And it's something that we should definitely look at and explore, definitely, and have a voice in some way, shape, or form.
All right, so I see division here as a 2-2.
Well, can I get one more go back? I know we recently did a change to our norms and procedures relative to proclamations like this. Does, do you, anybody happen to remember the specific? Anybody do a quick word search on?
Yeah, I don't have the exact language right in front of me, but it's, you know, the city council won't weigh in things that are outside of the subject matter or affect residents of our community, right? And so I think you could make an argument that there are many residents in our community that are affected by some of the immigration policies and the statements thereof. And so I think if the council would like to bring something back for consideration, that would certainly, I think, be allowed under that policy. I can see if I can pull it up really quick and read it and see if we can find exactly what it said, but my recollection was it was, it was to discourage things like policies maybe on Ukraine or things that are happening in the Middle East.
Gaza, ceasefire, genocide.
Some of the other areas that are really outside of our, our community or things that are happening nation, or internationally.
And for this, this would be more so also just to kind of, just to stand insubvidently with our community, right? It would be, as we talked about before, that we are complying with California.
I think those could be more clear. I do think so. I think those are, but I think they might be on purpose. Because it may, so I don't want to speak for the chief, but there's a reason why maybe it's not so widely spread. I don't, I don't want to assume, but if you want to elaborate on that a little bit.
Are you speaking about the?
On ICE and.
Yeah, so.
Following, yeah.
Yeah, as far as what we do, we do not participate with ICE in any form or fashion when it comes to enforcement in our city with immigration. We do not participate in providing them information when it comes to any in custody individuals that we have. We do not ask our community members of what their immigration status is. And as far as I know, the history of our organization, we have never done that. And under my tenure, we have definitely not done that. So for us, we follow the laws as directed by the state of California. And we do not participate right now with anything to do with ICE and in the future. I doubt that that would ever change in our state.
And so I, and I think to our Vice Mayor's point, I don't know that that's necessarily widely known. Is that, is that your point?
Yes.
Okay, so is that something that you want the police chief to let it be more understood or communicate that message? Or are you looking for a council resolution or, you know, something along the, maybe the same lines?
Looking for a council resolution, just to see if that's something, again, I wanted to bring it up to everyone. I don't just want to kind of point it towards the direction and let's go there. Because I do agree that there are certain things out of the purview of our city and our region that we just can't not control. But I do, I would like it to make known, you know, that Elk Grove is, we stand for all our residents, all our residents here and those who are being impacted. So if that is for, for Chief, just to make an emphasis, just to make known that we won't be assisting any of that sort that's going after some folks. You know, I know that there's probably exceptions, but again, that's purview to what's going on. But I would appreciate if that's something that we could do.
Yes, we can do, we can do something of that nature. We have done something with our city website as well quite some time ago. We did put that statement out saying that we did that and we followed the act that the state has implemented. I don't remember exactly when we did that, but it was when this, it's probably been two or three months now. So we've done that once and we can, through the city website, definitely restate that same thing.
And I think a lot of these issues, it's incumbent upon us, who those who feel very passionate about certain issues. We can't be all things to everyone, but I mean, I'm very passionate about what's happening in the Middle East, particularly with our Palestinians. But I, you know, we had several ask for a ceasefire resolution. But, you know, this again, going back to the work that the council does focus on, really focusing on the needs of our community. But we can, of course, reemphasize that we are a city welcome to all, that diversity is our strength. We, a lot of us do this, and I would encourage others, if you feel comfortable, raise your voice, raise your awareness because we are representatives of our community. And it is important, the dialogue is important, but I, you know, I also want to be very careful and balancing that with creating maybe more fears and more, you know, creating more issues. And it does open up a Pandora's box for other community groups who want us to weigh in. So it is a very fine balancing act. But I think for the issues that we are passionate about, we absolutely should use our voice. And I'm with you on that. I've, I've used my voice on, on some of the raids and my disgust because it is breaking up families and particularly it's targeting communities of color. And right now, there is, she's an 80-year-old Sikh woman who is in custody with ICE, 80 years old. It breaks my heart. Her children, her grandchildren want to see her released. There are so many other families, that's just one. So it's not just a Latino community. I know our Filipino community, this is a huge issue. The Indian community, all communities of color, this is a big issue. And we will lend our voices where we can and help raise awareness and increase the dialogue on this issue and so many other issues. You know, I don't remember the last count of how many Palestinians have been murdered. So, but, you know, I can't solve, unfortunately, the Middle East crisis right here at City Hall. I know the limitations of this role, but I will raise my voice and I encourage all of you to do the same.
Oh, believe me, I definitely do it in my private and quiet circles and they will become louder in the, in the coming days and weeks and months because it's affecting all of us. It's affecting all of us. And we're seeing friends and families and that are being affected by it and it's becoming deeper and deeper. Our commute, our commitment to the fuel network is definitely symbolic of that effort. But, but this is becoming, is getting way beyond the political realm and getting more into the humanitarian realm. And that's where we all have to play a part.
And I would always be happy to assert that we are following the law as we are required to do. That is, I mean, I think we should always be doing that. So I would certainly support you coming in with a, with the statement that you, we have already said, but we can say that again, right? We will follow the law.
And it's in our newsletter, right? I mean, I feel like it's been shared, it's been shared on social media. But I do think to, to the Vice Mayor's point, it's not necessarily widely known. And there was an issue here a couple of weeks ago at the Spartan Race. We all heard about it. And it was a very touchy, delicate subject on how to navigate through that, but we got through that. But these are real fears and concerns that are out there and we can't turn a blind eye to that. But I do think there are many appropriate ways that we can use our voice and support causes that help.
So it sounds like we've got some direction here. I just wanted to maybe close the loop on this. We do have a webpage that talks about immigration issues and, and we can send out a link and we can do a better job of maybe publicizing that. And we probably beef that up a little bit and talk about some of the things that you mentioned tonight. Because I think there is confusion still in the community about what we do and what we don't do. And so I think we can be more clear on that, even though we've issued statements and everything else. Not everybody's on social media, not everybody's on the website. And so there's probably ways that we can, that we can do that. And so why don't we take a look at that, that website and see if we can beef that up a little bit and make sure it's consistent with our, the things we've already stated, that we're going to follow the law and it's consistent with all of those things. We make sure that the immigration community in Elk Grove understands the support that they have here and the resources that are available to support them and doing that, our support of the fuel network and other kinds of things that that's, that's on there. I also just want to maybe close the loop on the, the language that Councilmember Spies was talking about. And it's really under the section relating to proclamations, which you could say proclamation similar to resolution. So if that's what we're talking about, it does say, "Subject matter must be a matter of local concern and fall within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city of Elk Grove." So that, you can make an argument maybe either way that this could fall within that. I think, I think it probably would fall within that. But however the council wants to decide to move forward, that's certainly your discretion. So if you would like us to just continue to, to send out the messages that we've already done or reinforce those and beef up the way so we can make sure that our community understands where we stand and clearly with these issues, then we can do that, with or without a resolution.
And so our, our website is already multilingual, right? It is, okay, so it's in different languages, okay.
And it can be, and folks can translate.
Right. Click a little switch or something, okay, got it.
All right, well, we'll try this out and should we need to revisit it, we will. Is that, is that good? Okay, all right. I will waive my report, got lost there. And I do believe. And, uh, I do believe, um, Councilmember Brewer, you wanted to adjourn in somebody's memory?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Um, so earlier today, news, news came out that Cindy Mann, uh, the wife of Tom Mann of Mann Ranch passed away. And passed away unexpectedly. For myself, she was a, she was a good friend to me as well. And if you, if you've seen some of my commercials in the past, you will see Cindy Mann and Tom Mann in there, um, with David Lima. And so those three being very instrumental in Elk Grove history, um, and, and, and representing Elk Grove in a very positive light through the Historical Society, um, is definitely a person who I've grown very close to, and there are not a lot of issues that we agreed on, but on the stuff we did agree on, it was always done in a, in a very positive light, very positive spirit, and I will definitely miss her for that. There will be a, a, a service for her this Saturday, um, at Herberger Funeral Chapel at 11 o'clock. Um, there will be a, a, a private, um, celebration, um, after that at the ranch, but, um, there will be a celebration of life held for Cindy at a later date. And so for those who know Cindy and knew, and know both Cindy and Tom, definitely reach out to Tom, see how he's doing. Um, I talked to him earlier today via text. He's doing good, but he's still in shock. And so I definitely want to, uh, send my condolences to the entire Mann family on behalf of all of us.
Thank you. We all extend our condolences and may her memory be a blessing to everybody that knew her. And at this time, I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 9:14 PM. Have a good evening.